Perfect.
Pamela Blue was absent. All right, six o'clock. Welcome one and all to the city council committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, September eighteenth. Go ahead and call it to order. We have all seven council members present. Mayor's here. Lots of staff, our staff, council staff, administrative staff. Let's go ahead and jump right in. Our first item, this is by the way, for those of you don't come to these all the times. This is our workshop meeting. This is not a formal meeting. We don't, you know, follow Robert's rules or anything in this meeting very much. It's mostly to discuss and decide what we're going to vote on at a later date for the most part. So our first item in the discussion and progress report on the fifty-six-hundred West Old Bingham Highway Station area plan. This can be Taylor from planning.
Great. Thank you, Chair Council. Thanks for giving us a little bit of time tonight. We have Emily Burrows from Design Workshop. She's online as well, so she'll help me talk through this. Um, yes, as you're aware, with House Bill four sixty-two passed a couple of years ago, we need to do a stationary plan for around every track station. We have a requirement to have our fourth one adopted by the end of two thousand twenty-five. The fourth one we're looking at, so we're hoping to have this adopted by the end of this year, give us a an extra year to start working on plans five, six, and seven. We have seven total stations. Um.
You know, great, because we had so many.
We're very excited with the progress we've made on this. We've had a planning open house and we've tried to incorporate some feedback we received from that. Next step is for us to take this out to the public, but before we did that, we wanted to share where we were at with the council. Get the council's feedback and make sure that we're taking something to the public that the council is generally okay with. If there's red flags or things we need to change, we want to hear feedback tonight. Nothing is in stone. We haven't crossed any bridges, Rubicons that we can't come back from, but after tonight, we will start moving towards that adoption phase. So we do really want your feedback tonight as we go to the final spreadsheet. Um, also worth noting that we don't control almost any of the land. Actually, I don't think we control any of the land in this stationary plan. So when we look at it, this is very visionary and we're required by the state to do these plans. We're not going to go and tell anyone that owns and operates a business in this area that they need to move or they need to make these plans. It's really a way for us to set the table for if and when it becomes economically viable for them to leave. And it's advantageous for them to do so, that we have a plan for how this area will develop. Um, looking at the plans you'll see tonight, if we had willing partners that wanted to leave tomorrow, we're not a place where you build this anything. Because we have a lot of infrastructure needs. So that's why this is looking very plusy into the future, because this is, I think you'll see a pretty drastic change from what we've seen past in this location.
Just just to caveat to that, we're not going to build it ever. It's not going to be on the city. It's going to be on private businesses and private developers to have and build. Which if they wanted to start working on infrastructure projects tomorrow, they could, right? Um, so.
Yes, and we would probably, if we adopt this, want to get both things on future infrastructure master plan so that we could, as development gets ready to start collecting impact fees for some things and stuff.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. We're not going to build this. It's not city.
I just don't want to discourage any potential investors and builders who may be watching with bated breath to see what they could possibly do here. To say, no, 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 you can't do it for a long time. If you want to do it now, we will figure out a way.
Okay. Sorry, kind of tucked on that. So project goals here, encourage economic development around the station, considering a variety of housing types and densities. That's one of the requirements of House Bill four sixty-two. Proposed land uses will create true mixed uses in the area, build off of existing amenities like Old Bingham Highway, Bingham Creek Regional Park, Mountview Corridor. Reimagine how Bingham Highway, Old Bingham Highway can be used as kind of gateway to the city. And so re-envisioning how that is and new mobility options there and establish connections to existing neighborhoods and amenities. It's not.
Progress, progress, progress.
Uh, it's now listed on here as one of the project goals, but something that we have had kind of a rise after we've been doing this project is it actually will support our three-station plan. Some of the things that we all four propose in the three-station plan, which we passed earlier this year, can be facilitated thanks to this panel, but. Uh, check timeline is much longer than we originally anticipated. We originally had about a six-month timeline. You see, it's been over a year. And the reason for that is we originally just envisioned this area maybe pretty much the same, industrial, not a large change. Uh, but as we started looking into the studies more and evaluating everything, kind of visioning what we wanted to do, we felt like there was opportunities to think big, especially if we're thinking long term. So we put it on hold. We realized that was going to cost more money. We went back to Wasatch Front Regional Council. They allocated about ten thousand additional dollars for us to expand the scope. So with that expanded scope in Wasatch Front Regional Council, we started here earlier this summer and hoping to have this adopted by the end of the year. So about six to eight months long, it'll be just rated, but but because it really could really scope. For those not familiar with the project or the station, it is in the southwest quadrant of the city, really just the first thing to see across the border from South Jordan. Uh, so existing land uses in the area, everything you see in purple is industrial. Most of that is engraved is either out of our jurisdiction or not developable power, utilities, a lot of things that we can't do. So anything that would be developed would be in that purple area and as Emily will kind of touch about presentation, it even focuses in more.
Taylor, can I ask you a question? How much of? When we were supposed to do the station area plans, it was supposed to be what, half mile? How much of this plan is in South Jordan or did we stop at the West Jordan city boundary?
So about a third of, maybe a little longer, a third, twenty-five percent of the area is within South Jordan. We approached them, asked them if they wanted to partner with us on this, and they said, no, we have the D-Right master plan. We don't care what you guys do. So we decided to focus just on the West Jordan areas. It doesn't really carry over because there was no interest from that community to participate in this planning.
So, okay. Now, with that said, though, we have, I mean, I know in the meetings that I've been in on this, it's being developed with knowing what daybreak is, right? Knowing where daybreak is and what it is and what they're planning. I'm just wondering what, I'm just wondering what South Jordan thought of this and anything that touches South Jordan.
We're gonna, we'll have a survey out after this presentation too, and that'll be available for the public so they can also look at that survey too and see what we're planning for this.
Yeah, and limited conversations we have had with them, their only real concern was where Granville Avenue connects. They've already got funding and allocation and alignment for that, so this isn't going to change anything like that. So knowing that Granville Avenue is going to connect through as planned, a lot of their concerns were sessioned that. We helped them secure that money, didn't we? And. Now, so some of the policy recommendations that we're coming up with so far is really not reinventing the will, using that PSOD overlay to strengthen what we have and just making some changes to that to allow for a little bit more density and to place that onto this property, similar to the recommendations we saw from the three-stations plan. We'll get more into what those densities will look like and land uses will look like. Now, actually, it'd be Emily and all this current at the river. Emily, just let me know when you want to go to the next slide and I'll.
Thanks, Taylor. So yeah, we'll go into the project vision of the site, explaining the programming and also how people will move to and from it throughout the site. So next slide. So we really first wanted to focus on the circulation of the site with the current land use of being light industrial and evolving it to what will be at this mixed-use, high-density area. We knew circulation was going to be a key component. So as we explained the circulation, I, we wanted to focus it on these three key areas. So next slide. Um, the first area is the brick line. This will be the crucial connector that will link from what you see on the site plan here that highlighted yellow from the fifty-six-hundred West Station on the west, all the way to Bingham Creek, straight through, uh, the Bingham Creek Regional Park on the east. Um, and painting homage to the interstate brick, we wanted to call this the Brick Line. Um, being the main corridor, we wanted to make sure that this would be an easy and safe way, uh, safe street for everyone to navigate, especially for people on bikes and also pedestrians. Um, so with that, we wanted to make sure the Brick Line design prioritized having crosswalks, traffic coming measures and bike lanes. And in addition, to create that main corridor hub of activity, all land use programming will be integrated along the street, which will include commercial, residential, office, and recreation. Next slide. Um, as you can see here on this Axon diagram, again, you'll just see, really, I'm showing that point of how the Brick Line will be that crucial connector from the station area um, down in that yellow area up to the park, um, and then how lining the street, you can see that there's buildings lining it that'll create those mixed uses, creating that hub of activity in that destination area. Next slide. And then the street, um, the street section that you see here, again, emphasizes the safety for multimodal transportation. Again, really focusing on pedestrians and cyclists. So as you can see here, we're including wide sidewalks, complete street with trees, benches, art installations, and amenity zones. And then as you can see, right in the middle, we have that center median to activate the corridor and encourage community interactions. Next slide.
So. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you did this, did you think about a street that is closed to cars? That is, that is solely pedestrian bicycle, things like what Charlottesville, Virginia's got, Denver's got. Close street, where you've got the street that's, uh, really the street can become a hub of activity. Have we thought about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we really want cars to go down this?
Yeah, so we can look into that too. Um, so if you go on the next slide, we actually have some precedent imagery of what was kind of like inspired what the Brick Line was. So as you can see here, with that high-density mixed use to activate that corridor with the, um, we want to make sure the ground floor will be lined with shops, cafes, and restaurants to attract people from day to night. So as you can see in the bottom right, we have Laramore Square and then a mixed-use Paseo Crocker Park in Ohio and how those are lined. And so with that, um, we wanted to see if there was other ways we can utilize that space, so especially from like a, um, uh, a day-to-night use, if there's ways that we can look at creating an active space. So, um, in Cherry Creek, we have that Clayton Lane on the bottom right, um, and they close that off for cars as well, uh, for events, um, making it just a pedestrian walkway. So we can look and see, and we can take that back to the drawing board too. Maybe we want to turn this into a completely non-car, um, just a pedestrian and bike area. Because I know Laramore used to be that way and now it's closed off, um, and then, or we can do it like maybe temporary, like how the Cherry Creek one you see on the right is, where it's closed off for certain times and certain events as well. So we'll look and see if you, um, what, what option kind of works out best with the circulation of the site? Just because we do have to keep in mind, um, the north end of the site down to the south, if anyone's traveling through, and we're hoping, as you'll see through the rest of this, uh, site programming, we want to bring people up from the north to this site. So if they're trying to go through the site, we have to keep that in mind of how those cars would intersect this street area too. So, um, yeah, that's something we definitely will explore. But as of now, the way we have it laid out, it's open for temporary closures like you see on the night market activation.
It is the main access for, uh, the main east-west, uh, corridor for cars at this time. Now, that's not the same. It is the main.
I've just, I've just seen other streets like the one in Charlottesville. I can't remember the name of it. Uh, the street, I don't remember what the heck it is. I just, I just know that I've seen some streets like that in Charlottesville where they've shut down the street and it's become a super successful hub for commerce and, uh, you know, restaurants and, you know, and then it's, it's easier for outdoor dining and some of those kind of things because they're not dealing with cars. So.
Yeah.
I think at the minimum, we'll include that in our surveys and we'll go out to see if that's something that people support, because that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea as well. So, yeah, we'll definitely look into that just because there are so many successful examples, um, we can look at for that as well. Um, and then, yeah, with that, we'll just have to consider how the circulation will have to be adjusted for that too. So, um, but yeah, that's a great, great idea. Um, and then the last image I wanted to touch on was that Park Paseo, so Commonwealth Avenue. Just because we do have that center median, it kind of gives it some opportunity to create some small open spaces between that street. Um, so yeah, we just wanted to put that in there, how it can be utilized for park space or just like hangout spaces in these green areas in between the street. Okay, so next slide. Um, so the next area that we wanted to highlight was the station area itself. So this will be the hub and the vital connection for those coming to and from the site, utilizing both, um, the track station or BRT line or just driving through as well. Um, so in addition to the station area, um, it will also be supported by the Jordans, it will also support the Jordan School District by providing warehouses that will store education materials, supply, and equipment. Next slide.
One thing I want to talk about before we move to the next slide, this is something I really like on this plan, is you'll notice that there's still access to the station off of Old Bingham Highway for vehicles over here. So this does a good job of separating, uh, auto-oriented drivers who want to come to the station and get on tracks and those who are in the area walking around and want to get on tracks using that way. So, uh, that reduces the conflict points between vehicles and pedestrians that way. Um, and the tracks line itself kind of serves that down. People aren't going to be crossing that. So I like how we have kind of both separated, so the car, be able to park close to the station. You're not going to worry about, you know, getting weird on the street with their family.
So the tracks line almost becomes the barrier between the parking lot of the station and the rest of the development. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Question is, why Jordan School District in this location?
So the reason for that is UTA owns this property and UTA wants that on that property right there, right there.
Well, yeah. From one part of the city and putting it in another place.
So this property is just a concept. Yeah, why we identified this because it would be a good location for both us and the school district. This would allow them, uh, quicker access to Mount View Corridor to get to more of their schools. It also allows us to reprogram this property out here. This property is less desirable. It's next to some very high voltage power lines and a lot of them. Uh, this property, we feel like has.
It would come up for between the power substation and the parking area for the, for the tracks line. Is that what you're saying?
There's a water tank out there too. There is a water tank. Is that a water tank or south?
South Jordan. Is it, is it that long bar between the, the substation and the parking lot areas up where the Jordan School District is proposed?
So we're looking at this right here.
Oh, that there, okay.
Yeah, we really wanted to utilize this area as like a transition zone for not only people to get to and from the site, but also that can, that from the, like the utility district to our site and also West Jordan to South Jordan.
I don't love the school district right there, but.
Why?
I already said.
What was your question?
I still love the school district there. We, we're dealing with having them to move them out of here because we want to build up a beautiful station area. And just putting them in another station area where we could potentially build up something more beautiful than the warehouse. Right? That's, that's my thought.
Except that area is full of warehouses, so.
Currently.
Well, you know, just across the street. Oracle or.
It's a concept.
It's a, exactly. Uh, Councilmember Lamb's right. It's a concept.
Okay, um, so because of its multifunctional role as a transportation connector and a Jordan School District site, again, as I just said before, with the site's placement bordering South Jordan, this stationary will also function as that like transition zone. So as you see, as we start building up the land uses, which we'll talk about next, you'll see how it kind of is placed to see how it, it, it does like with the location, at least where we have it in this concept right now, it works well for that transition um, from West Jordan to South Jordan and also kind of border that utility area that we have right now currently. Uh, next slide. Um, from looking at the section diagram, this emphasizes how the stationary will be this transit hub for all users. And by integrating, um, the tracks, BRT, and all multimodal transit options, the station area will be a place where pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles can coexist together. Uh, next slide. Um, again, there you start just some precedent imagery here, but you'll just see some examples that integrate transit hubs with multimodal transportation, um, which fifty-six-hundred could also be for the future. So again, just seeing how BRT or buses is kind of like together with, um, the train and also how like bikes or pedestrians can also be accommodated in that space.
Yeah, and we should just mention that BRT or fast bus with UTA is calling it now, uh, will be having the end of that line at fifty-six-hundred West. That's required to come online with the current intention to Mount View Corridor.
It's express bus, not a BRT.
Yeah, oh, fast bus, express bus, so not a BRT, but it's basically, yeah.
Okay, we will make sure, we'll, we'll, we'll note that, update with that as well. Um, and then the last area we want to look at is Old Bingham Highway. So as Taylor was saying, and as you can see highlighted on this map, we really want to create a bold vision for how we can revitalize what is currently a traff, heavily trafficked road into this welcoming pedestrian-friendly corridor that connects areas, uh, surrounding areas to our site. Next slide. Um, so looking at this Axon diagram, Old Bingham Highway can be a key component to help evolve what is currently dominated by light, light industrial, industrial use to the site's vision of becoming this vibrant mixed-use area cut, bringing together community and creating this hub of economic growth. Next slide. Um, looking at the street section, oh, uh, looking at the street section, you will see that the future of Old Bingham Highway will still accommodate vehicles. But with the, um, the greener you see here, this will also provide enhancements for cyclists and pedestrians. So again, looking at this, uh, section here, we'll have wide sidewalks, dedicated bike lanes, which is already marked in the, uh, future transit plan, like the master transit plan for the area, um, crosswalks, pedestrian signals to all ensure safe and convenient access for everyone. Um, this will also help bridge, uh, the separating areas into our site.
There looks like, looks like on the map on the previous slide, that there's a couple of new crossings across the railroad tracks there?
Yeah, so we'll have to do that for, those are connecting, that's the, for this site, we're gonna, from the north, we try to look at the streets up to the north of the site and how this will connect down to our sites and creating those connections. So with that, we would also create some type of, um, cross, uh, pedestrian signal crosswalk.
Yeah, I just, um, is that, is that rail line only UDOT or does UP have a stake in that rail line as well? I just know getting railroad crossings done across, getting, getting roads and things to cross railroad tracks is, well, it takes an act of Congress and sometimes literally it takes an act of Congress and sometimes it takes like an authority higher than that. Like an act of God or whatever, you know, I mean, like the one on Seventieth South and, and Airport Road, it was like twenty years that they've done. So I'm just thinking, I'm wondering if, if this is a, a potential hurdle here or if there's a way to design around that.
It's UTA. I don't know if there's any, yeah, I don't think there's any rail spurs beyond this. I think this line from this portion all the way to the end is just the UTA.
But is there, is there anything because it is a rail? That.
Steel.
It's going to make, and I don't like to get in the weeds on plans, but this could really affect the plan, right? We can't get the rail crossings done. I could really screw up this whole kind of concept. So I'm, I'm just trying to think, you know, what if that's a problem?
And our, we can talk to UTA too about it and see what that process would be and how it, them looking at, because they've been on this process with the whole time and they haven't raised anything, but we'll ask them just again, just to make sure that if this is going to be an actual hurdle or not, just because, yeah, you're correct. This would, this would have to change our plan if it is.
It wouldn't have to change it a lot. You could just put in another parallel street, you know, on the south side of the tracks. Put everything back just, you know, fifty feet or whatever, take out some of your parking stalls. Um, but it is only, east to west, it's only, this interstate break property is only half a mile across. So it's not, it's, it's not like we need railroad crossings every hundred feet, right? Or whatever that is, hundred fifty yards, whatever that is between those two in the middle.
Yeah.
Um, especially considering they don't connect to anything. To the roads.
Across the street.
Right, but what I'm saying is if there's a, as long as there's a way in, that's all you need is a way. And there's two already, right? There's the fifty-six-hundred last and then there's the further east. One up at the top, it's on the, on the west edge of the park. It's already there, so.
So we, we couldn't make it work without them.
Yeah.
It, it's more preferable for more walkability and shorter block lengths, but yes, we could probably live without them.
It's just there's nothing out there to walk to on the other side, right? Well, that, that was going to tie into my comment is there's nothing to walk into. What we've got to do is we can't just have this three-block stretch, a nice road out there on Old Bingham Highway. If we're going to upgrade that part of Old Bingham Highway, it's got to go all the way. It's got to go, it's got to go down to Ninetieth South. Yeah, um, you know, and, and, and we've got to start that process.
A portion of that's already been done.
Some of it, some of it is nice, some of it is.
Some of it is UTA parking lot. We had forty-eight-hundred, uh, Old Bingham Highway, that track station, the next one, just inside baseball, that's probably the next station we'll master plan for. So hopefully we can continue this road.
Yeah, I mean, because we're, we're talking about, what, eight block, fifty-six to forty-eight, we're, we're talking about an eight-block, eight-block difference. The computer wants to restart everything. But we, what I'm saying is we just can't have a nice piece of street. And then it, it's, and it's this nice piece of street in isolation, if the rest of Old Bingham doesn't look good. You know, you get down towards Ninetieth and you got the one little memorial and park that's semi-maintained.
But we've got to. It's on the traffic and.
Yeah.
You think the time is, when this happens, right?
Talk about all that later. We're just talking about this little area right here now.
But it's got to be a compromise. If we're, if we're not aware of that, saying, hey.
We're not submitting from here to Ninetieth. We're just submitting this portion.
Well, right, that's what's got to be submitted.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's a good thing. It's definitely got to be. Yeah, it just can't be done in isolation, is my point.
No, I understand. Well, we could spend hours designing the city today. So let's just focus on this one.
Um, and then, uh, this street, uh, if you want to just, oh, yeah, we already entered the street section. Okay, yeah, so this, just looking at precedent images of like successful examples of multimodal transit with complete streets. Um, as you can see from these pictures here, with there's like things like tree-lined roads, green spaces and public art to help create that safe and inviting, um, space for residents and visitors to go to and from the site. And then next slide. Okay, so now we'll get into land uses and the more of the site programming of the site. So we wanted to create this high-density mixed-use districts overall for the entire site. But we'll go into each, um, land use, but the site is kind of broken down into three different focuses. So the center of the site where that Brick Line Main Street is, um, will be, uh, mixed-use with commercial and, um, will be mixed-use with more of a commercial line Main Street. Um, the south bordering South Jordan's Daybreak will be more residential focused, while the north towards Old Bingham Highway will be more commercial entertainment focused. So next slide. So we'll now show the site plan being built up floor by floor and the different land use to understand how this entire area will contain all these mixed uses. So we originally saw. So we originally saw this axon on all these buildings, but now you'll see how each of these buildings kind of has different uses throughout. Um, so for retail, which as you can see here will be mainly on the ground floor. It's intended to support the activity between the station and Bingham Creek Regional Park along that brick-lined main street. And also there'll be some northern parts of the site along Old Bingham Highway that will have that retail as well. Next slide. Um, and then as you can see throughout this, as we go through each of these programmings, we'll have, um, we'll provide area takeoffs for each land use. So as you can see here for retail, it's about twenty, twenty-two, um, oh my god, two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, and then also we had some precedent imagery of what we envisioned these retail uses could be. So this include things like food hall, market spaces, shopping hubs, or mixed use with retail at the ground floor. Or with residential or office above, but kind of like as you see right there with that Whole Foods at the bottom. Next slide. Um, the next we'll have is office space that we want to get into. So to utilize those coming to and from the station, um, office use uh must be accommodated. So the office uses will be more focused on the center of the site, mostly with mixed-use buildings. Next slide. Um, and again, here's some precedent imagery of what those could look like. And with the retail especially up below. Um, this kind of creates those activated ground use, uh, ground floor uses as well. Next slide. Um, so the next on the Axon buildup is this purple that you see towards the north, um, and that's defined as entertainment. So with the station area providing an opportunity to become this destination area, there should be a focus, we thought, that one family focus and complimentary entertainment uses. Next slide.
Which of those is the, I see an arena picture. Is there a concept of an arena of any of those?
So yeah, some of the concepts we thought of, and we kind of pulled this from the design charrette, um, from what we heard about with it, um. We uh wanted year-round family-friendly activities such as like the Great Wolf Lodge that was discussed in the design charrette. We have another, the image below is kind of like this family arcade area that has go-karts and like indoor activities too. And then also, um, a big thing that was discussed in the design trip was kind of like a youth hockey training center in camp to complement. Um, some of the other facilities coming into that area as well. So, um, those were some of the ideas that we had for some of these uses. So we tried to take those footprints as we developed the site plan for all these things that we're talking about today. We looked at some of these precedent images and took the square footages of that and what a typical building footprint for those could look like and see how it'd fit on our site. So um, towards like the. Eat the west side, we have that Great Wolf Lodge along with like the footprint of a Great Wolf Lodge, what that could look like along with like something like an arcade center or something family-friendly. While towards the east side um of the site, that's more of that youth hockey camp center we were thinking about.
And so I want to talk on the youth hockey for a second, um. A couple of us had an opportunity uh to go down to Henderson, Nevada for an afternoon and. Uh, their main street, they call it Water Street, it's really activated by they have uh a hockey facility for the Golden Reserve. Uh, so we had that kind of in mind and then with Utah having a new hockey team coming and so many kids, uh. Junior jazz is the most successful basketball program in the country. There's not. Facilities for hockey with the new franchise looking here, we think it makes sense to keep hockey.
No, it makes perfect sense because they're practicing past midnight over in currents. Because there's just not enough places for hockey and if it's going to continue to grow, that's going to be continuing to be an issue.
Yeah, so we thought this could be, you know, place where you could have multiple rigs where you have practices and games and really be a center for youth hockey in Valley State.
I can't, you're just as good a baseball stadium.
So, uh, Taylor. Uh, picture looks like a gay lord resort, is that the, are we looking at bringing a gay lord in?
So that's actually the Great Wolf Lodge. Uh, so it's indoor, uh, swimming pool. I don't know, it's.
Yeah, those things are like entire cities.
Ball in America.
But we also thought that might make sense because, you know, we love swimming here, but nine months of the year you can't, so why not do a facility for you to. Cool, so you can use steer ground. Thanks Emily, sorry.
No, no worries. Um, and then with the entertainment uses and access to mountain view, we also want to accommodate the hospitality for the site area. So as you can see, that kind of light pink next to the purple, that's kind of accommodating um the hospitality. Next slide.
So I'm going to ask a question. Does it have a steakhouse, a Costco and a Trader Joe? Never mind. All of the above. It's, it's a mini, we made all three, we're good, it's a mini Costco.
Turn on the free health for Costco, it's twenty-five thousand square feet, but. The other two.
Um, and then the hospitality, we just have some precedent images here that can kind of range from small to larger hotels to accommodate those like seven hundred rooms we have. At least right now keyed out for this um site area.
Yeah, and one of the things that came out was maybe the potential to host some conferences here, you know, some members of council were interested in potentially a conference or anything so else.
Yeah, we made sure we designed uh at least one of those hotels to have a full floor of conventions and stuff.
That, that belongs more to city center than it does.
But there's nothing.
There's a reason for that.
Because no one's bull one. Guy who never climbed Mount Everest.
He tried it.
See?
Never even find one.
I didn't go on Emily. Seventy-five.
We're bickering Emily, sorry.
Well, no, no worries at all. And this is all feedback we need, so. Um, so for residential, which is shown in this light yellow on the Axon, this will support less residents living in this mixed-use area. Um, so as you can see in these little callouts, um, the residential units will range in different densities. So at the station area, we have the highest density of up to ten floors at that intersection. Um, and the high density will continue up to five floors throughout the center of that site on the brick line towards Bingham Creek Regional Park. And then as we, we wanted to consider, we definitely were considering daybreak throughout this as well. So um, towards the south as it transitions towards daybreak, um, that goes towards more of a median density at four floors. Next slide. Um, and then here's some precedent imagery of what different residential densities could look throughout our site area. So we have again, you'll see some like lower density versus higher density and like that medium density in between. Next slide. And then with the Bingham Creek Regional Park next to our site, we really want to take advantage of that. And the teal building you see in that southeast corner of the Axon is a great opportunity area for civic use to support any future community needs. Next slide. So with that, we wanted to kind of see how could this site, how could the civic cent, the civic use kind of complement Bingham Creek Regional Park? So we wanted to, uh, these are some present images we thought, like maybe potentially a rec center um that people could go to, especially for that. Um, all year-round use, especially in the winter if it gets too cold and also maybe provide some recreational fields as well. Next slide.
So you're gonna put a. A free market pool on one corner and then you're gonna put a tax care pool on another corner?
Be honest, we didn't know what to put there. We wanted to save it for a civic site for the city to decide what is best there. So it could also be a library, it could be a fire station, it could be. An elementary school, it could be any use, we just didn't want to. Give up this whole site and not have a plan for some sort of public use that could be beneficial here. We didn't know what it was, so. Those are some other things we've seen in other places, but we're not saying.
I think it's pretty far south. In our city to have a civic use. Unless it's a county, county building. That's South Jordan's order, though to me, the civic use unless it's the county use, that's not really. No. And my other comment will be. I was hoping there would be more entertainment where. Thirty years out and I'm fine with that, send me still any. Workyard being there, so. They can keep being there.
Your state grid wasn't. I mean, I'm thirteen piece, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's Brickyard Plaza with the polls.
You're just moving around so like you know things named, bring in something, it was, there's a Harman's there, maybe we can get a Harman's.
Harman's would be a great place.
Put Harman's in that too.
Is that more than a mile from the current one? Is that more than a mile then from the women's state grid?
But that would be closing this one, you can open. That one will be old in thirty years, now it's true one.
I like the way you think.
Okay, so the last thing we wanted to touch on was industrial. So like we talked about before with West Jordan School District relocating their warehouses from city center to our site. Um, the dark uh gray building on the Axon, that's that industrial space we have designated to accommodate um the warehouse needs. Um, in addition, you'll see the land on the north side of Old Bingham Highway will also remain industrial. Uh, next slide.
So just let the record state that I think it'd be great if. Jordan Schoolish building were on the other side of Old Bingham Highway to the north in that, in that. Triangle of versus right in the prime. Uh, station area. And we might be trying to identify the very. Was really using city center. Actually. Okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, you want, you'll, you want to reserve if what he's thinking, you'll want to reserve that big gray area for what he's thinking.
Absolutely. You say the name?
Is they need some bigger space anyway. And the rail spur. Let's add, and the rail spur, which that's.
Yeah. Yeah, the rail spur is. Pretty close.
This is just an overall again of the entire Axon, again, just summarizing everything, every land use we kind of went through. And the overall square footage we have so far from this, so um.
What's the total acreage of this plan that you've got drawn on the screen?
Uh, I believe it's like. Oh my god, I should. Do you know Taylor? I feel like. It's like.
I don't know that, I don't.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing we do and I also mentioned on this, um. So along the brick line, you can see that's a lot of structure parking, but we don't, the studies we've done, we don't feel like this whole site will. Support structured parking, so that's what you see to the north, a lot of surface parking. Because that's what all of our economic analysis has shown us, that's probably what the site will support is surface parking. Now, this all builds up and becomes very desirable, maybe at some point in the future, I redevelops, but right now we don't anticipate that. So that's why you see a lot of structured or surface parking. Say.
That's my biggest beef, that actually is all that part.
The part I like the least, I mean.
Some part we like the least as well. I got a lot of little use, that's, that's the biggest one.
Don't worry, the legislature will have gone in and decided what, how many parking spots we can have and it'll be done now.
I wonder how in South it'll be eliminated with, I mean, does this, the parking requirements kind of that have been figured into this hypothetical. Take into account that it's a stationary plan, that's the T O D.
So I don't think we envision any parking reductions. Really, yeah, so those are all things that council would have the option in the future, but we didn't want to come with something and have it be mainly that with this is underparked, it's not going to work, so. We figured it's easier to get rid of parking.
You can always add more buildings.
As my first thing is, I just want a unique, unique in a way where it intrigues. People to go there and be a part of the experience. It's not just a place to go, but it needs to be an experience. Because that's how we're going to get people there and to, to be successful.
Yeah. So do you feel like? The hockey and the Great Wolf Lodge is on that track, do we need more?
Hockey, yes, because that's not just a, a unique thing, but that's a, that's a need, it's not a necessarily want.
Yeah, that's not a thirty-year need, that's a.
That's a today, that's a yesterday need.
We also need to add the uh off-the-door memorial container park.
At least three of them in the city.
Cause what? I, I'm fortunate, I get to travel to most of the cities, like those pictures, I have been to ninety-nine percent of those pictures that had been posted. And what is really cool about the different cities, the coolest places to go, it's because it's unique. It's not like, it's not going to be the same as, you know, different other cities, it's unique to that city and that's what makes it so exciting to go. And so if we want people to go there, we've got to make some soul out of it.
One day I think I'd like to see a little bit of, and where I think Jordan landing messed up is that they. Um, all the buildings are on the outside, kind of like what you have here, and the parking's in the middle. So you can't just go around all the buildings, you have to get in your car and then go drive to another one. And if you want to do that, I. I might like to see something, I know this is a smaller area, but I think if we compacted the actual things for people to do. All in something and you weren't, say, walking across a parking lot to get to from a restaurant over to the other thing. That would be, that, that's what creates that walking environment and something unique. And that's where you can close off roads and stuff and you've got this entire walking through not just one road, but. Around little corridors and things like that that you.
Yeah, like you picked the pictures of Denver, those, those down little downtown spaces in Denver, that's a perfect example of that, including and walking down. Austin's the same way, Seattle has their same thing, it's, it's enclosed, walk around and it's an experience.
Yeah, we, we get kind of trapped in this idea of putting a parking lot in the middle and everything around the side of it. And I just, I think that just becomes uh, uh. A, a thing that just is not as inviting to hang around.
Doesn't create uniqueness.
Right, yeah, but I think that's something we could look for, um, the matter of.
And the hotel shouldn't be where the hotel, I knew it didn't. Put the hotel somewhere hidden away a little bit, but everything that's on the trail, on the tracks line. Needs to be, wow, look at me, I want to get off the train here.
Yeah.
You know, that, then the hotel is not that.
And, and I agree with, I agree with Zach is that. Assuming, and I'm making a big assumption here. But assuming that there are going to be a bunch of people. Riding the red line. To city to the south of us, to a stadium for a particular sporting event, I won't get into details. Where I was last taught. Yeah, but there, there's nothing to football. We want them, we want to be able to have an attractive thing that says with the big neon signs, that says. Get off here, spend some money here at our restaurants. Or come park here at our track station. And, and I'm going to tie into that, we need to be able to have a tie-in with the track station down the street. So that it's free, so that people can stop at Old Bingham, do what they need to do. And then continue to ride on down to the B stadium and be able to tie into that. If we don't tie into that. We're missing a big deal. And so I agree with, I agree with, with Councilmember Jacob. Is that the stuff along the tracks line that comes to the western curves? I, I just don't like the apartments right next to the track station. Because, because that doesn't, that just says I'm a residential place, why in the hell should I get off? It needs, that needs to be some of the excitement, the entertainment, the restaurants, the. Uh, you know, and maybe it's a, and maybe it's even another little north-south. Commercial street right there, you know, when, when, when I lived in Japan, and this was decades ago, but. Their whole community is focused around the train station, right? And shops and, and the stores and everything is focused around the train station. The apartments, the apartments are down the street. Um, and so. What, what I, I have a concern with, it's the same, is. The, the, you know, a couple of those, the retail along the, along the tracks line right next to those little crossings, great, I like that. Um, the hotel right next to, to the tracks line, maybe that says, hey, you're, you're entering a great district. But particularly as you come down and you start the curve. That's got to scream.
Get off here.
Get off here.
That's exactly right. Like that big warehouse, so everyone's.
We currently, we currently have it as residential to retail at the bottom, but I'm just like hearing your feedback here. I guess if we want to keep retail, is it just solely retail, nothing on top to deter if someone's on the, on the train?
And seeing that it's residential or if we, or is it mainly just like a sole retail with an entertainment maybe on along that area?
Yeah, I think it's more on the parking for me, it's all the, it's all. It's just you you're coming in from from further up the line and you're just coming into parking lot, building, parking lot, parking lot, building. Very much, oh, a hotel. So and I I think residential over retail is fine.
If this rotated more like that.
Right.
Yeah.
But then you still need the walkability to the main, maybe you move the main street north a little bit closer to the corner. Closer to the curve. You know, the.
Yeah, so the reason we are keeping the brick line here, and I think that's important, but this is the track station, this is where you get off. And so we want the first thing you get off to see is, oh, this is the main street.
It's this long, though. You know, the.
I think that was a hundred and fifty feet or so across, so it's only as long as the train, get off here. Here's your main street, here are your shops and restaurants and stuff, and at the end of it, it's going to be the park, you can put a monument or something down here to draw the eye, and then. You've got Granville Avenue here, and I think we should program that as well, and so you can have that access.
For me, I would shift that, that's probably right, for me, I'll I'll get at your point.
Only be able to see exactly what you're talking about.
But for me. This entertainment stuff. I think ought to be down here.
Yeah.
Because because what you want to do is get off tracks. And there's entertainment, not a part, not apartments, I would move the entertainment. And and some of that move move some of the apartments back. What we've done is we moved, we put the apartments right next to the track station. And what I would say is the apartments ought to be the closer to the park. Cause that's that the park's going to serve them better and then walking that distance is not going to hurt them.
All those apartments have retail or dining or.
Yeah, not all of them.
Further south.
Not the furthest south ones, but all the ones along the brick line do. But. We could probably intersperse intersperse some mixed one use ones that are better.
Yeah.
So that.
I think that's some good feedback.
Yeah, I think it is too.
One thing I would like to look at too, and I just want to make sure that what we're doing in terms of restaurant and entertainment. I of course love family stuff, but I don't want to put all of our entertainment into family. The reason why is because I think by the baseball park. They're going to be focused on, the Millers are going to focus on family stuff right there at the baseball park. I would love to have people who, I would like something a little more older than, you know, thirteen.
My prohibition bar.
Yes.
But when I saw this, I thought, man, it'd be cool if you had like a street that each have multiple bars on that you could have. And maybe.
Taterburk, who brought that idea? But I would like something where people went from definitely the baseball game. Well, there's only a move, because you know they're going to put in a movie theater by there and you know they're going to do all of the Miller stuff. But if they thought, if I just go a mile up this track station, I know there's going to be some fun stuff to do that is a little more. And I I, yeah, I don't want to say more adult, because they don't want to.
Move on rouge?
Yes, I I want to move on rouge and I want, but but I think that would be the thing, there's a place in um. And and the place is very uh, in Vegas called the Area Fifteen.
Call area, area fifty one.
Fifty one, oh, fifty one, yeah, I'm sorry, but. No, no.
No, but it's cool.
It's just cool and it is a warehouse, so I'm sorry about that, but but they had a warehouse. That they didn't know what to do with, and they just turned it into inside, it's just like there are golf simulators and there are bars and restaurants.
Secret bars.
Secret bars, there's arcades, there there's stuff for kind of all ages. But it's just something that's in this little warehousey kind of thing. And inside you go into it and it is the opposite of what you would think from when you're on the outside. And something like that, that would be a, there's also a Meowwo uh, installation there with the Omega Mart. But that kind of thing is something that um, I think would make people go, let's. Let's go there because there's a variety of things to do. And they they do things uh, sometimes at like nine o'clock, it's like, yeah, now it's only twenty one and older, the entire building. You know, for for this, and and that's where people know they can go and walk around the entire time and have something. But anyway, I just want to make sure that we're thinking in terms of what do we do for people who don't want just. The Great Wolf Lodge, you know. Water experience, you know, I want to go and have an almost club-like experience. Um, and something, so I'm just, I'm just saying something to look at.
It's got to complement. Daybreak and not be what the Millers are going to put in.
And that's what I'm saying.
And not go head to head, it's got to be different.
And and that's what I'm saying, especially if we can get the free ride from one of they go, let's just jump on this tracks, let's go there, no matter where we're going. Let's go here, hang around for a couple hours, we can go back wherever we want, but I'm I'm looking for places that are going to drag people from other cities.
Cause the B's, the B stop is going to be the next station down.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Because they're building a new station or the stadium, so.
Yeah.
The station, the station that the stadium's at is the very next stop. So we've got to take that into consideration and say, hey, we want this to be. Free track zone and build it now with a free fare zone between us and the stadium. And compliment it and want people to get the heck off before they get to the B's park.
Yeah, so that's just something I'm I'm thinking, if we can look at, you know, what areas might be able to be done in that regard as well.
Maybe you'd need to take your brick row and and have more of that fill along that part of the track.
Yeah, I I love the idea of the brick, brick line.
I do too. So that, so that it is that open draw you in.
There could be a T there.
That's I was just gonna say the same.
Yeah.
You you run the, you run a brick line down the tracks.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then T and and then it runs down the middle, so you've got a T. And you've got something on each end like a circle that's got something on each end that. So you've got a walking bowl, you've got a walking T that.
Let's divert tracks to go down the middle of of the city.
But I think you have the feeling, we want something just vibrant and and entertaining and things that that's different. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I think that's good feedback, um, you know, any questions, Emily, or do you?
No, this is all great feedback, stuff to take back and to consider and stuff as well, so thank you for all your feedback, it's been super helpful. Um, and yeah, thanks for your time and listening um, to our update as well.
Corbin, sorry, can I time in on one sec?
Yeah, me.
Have the hot chair.
Most of this uh, most of what we're looking at is owned by a single property owner. That property owner also owns this land here. And that's the one piece of this site that abuts, single family homes that are in West Jordan. Might I suggest to our planners to incorporate that parcel or that piece of land into the thinking and planning as well?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and and don't and and don't come back with, well, the parking lot's a great buffer.
Cause that would be exciting for them.
Corbin, does that piece of land tie into being, being a park?
Well, that road that's in between the two parcels goes down to, currently it goes down to like the Rad Canyon BMX track, if you're familiar with that. Which is getting. It's adjoining and will be incorporated into the overall master planning of the park.
Are you? Sorry, I'm getting just drawn here, are you, are you talking about this parcel here?
Wait, yes, yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to take note of that, cool, thank you.
Even if it's just an extension of the park, yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what it should be, and I don't want to debate right now, I just would like. Some, I I think it would be thought until it's put thought into that parcel.
We just, yeah, you're right, we don't want to leave a little narrow strip of land and say, now what do we do with this? Yeah, it needs to be.
Patio.
Cause it would be storage units.
Well, that's, that's the, you know what, you're not that far off because, yeah, we don't want it to be storage units.
All right, let's let Taylor have the rest of his night off. Appreciate all the feedback, thank you so much, and we'll.
Thank you so much.
For the end of the year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just think, you've only got three more to go.
Three more.
That's what I mean.
I think they're going to get easier in here. I feel it out there already are, two of them are going to be.
All right, the next item on our agenda is our uh, city of West Jordan fireworks.
Firework restriction, that's what you said, fire restriction. Since fire restrictions happen, fire alert.
Was it something we said?
Or any.
By the time this gets built, it'll be a place for you guys to.
By the time it's built, their grandkids will be living in. By the time it's built, their grandkids.
But she said, there should be murals there, oh, absolutely, please, should be murals there, we should have a whole like street of murals.
Yeah, we almost have mural ordinance.
No, no.
Really?
We are really New York City.
I can't wait to work on that.
Okay.
Feedbacks, Hill.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, um. I I appreciate the council bringing this up earlier in the year and kind of reminding us, it's something that I set a reminder in my calendar every year for about March. But um, I think it's good to have this extra time to discuss things and and kind of figure out what the council would like to do. Before we start, I know in your packet and all of the stuff that you got, there was a a little map, kind of an interactive map. Just want to thank Clint Hutchings and our GIS department for putting that together for us, they were able to compile. All the data that we gave them in more or less a spreadsheet form and put it into that map so that you can kind of see. Where we have fires, what they're related to, whether they're related to fireworks, whether they're in dumpsters. Things like that, so just to to remind you all, I think some of you were here back in twenty twenty. Um, the map that we had in twenty twenty outlined basically anything west of U one eleven was prohibited. And then the two major washes that that ran through the city. Um, twenty twenty one was a very dry year, there was a lot of concern throughout the state. Uh, state was enacting different things to try to prohibit, uh, all the fire chiefs in the valley got together and did a PSA, I don't know if you remember, it was skip a year. And I think that year is when West Jordan, we we had originally kind of planned on the U one eleven, we actually extended it further east to fifty six hundred uh, west. We also added some drainages and and waterways because the state code allowed for that. Um, at that time, there was some discussion about, I I know some council members wanted to just try to ban them outright in the city. Uh, state law doesn't allow us to do that really. Um, but we we came up with something that we felt was enough that it would at least. Uh, restrict fireworks as much as we could. On that west side where where we have the biggest threat with all the undeveloped land, so. Uh, we kept that map up until this year, um. Throughout those three years, we've got feedback on both sides of the issue, as I'm sure you each have as well. Some people are really grateful and wish we would restrict more, others are upset and frustrated because we've restricted their name, but. Um.
I'd say this year, the fourth of July. Day before and the day of. Were bad, but the rest of the month wasn't, so.
Yeah, and I think part of that, you know, is the education piece, that it it took a while for people to realize, hey, this is. This is where it is and and kind of for that to take hold.
You would think with the economy that they couldn't afford the three.
That could have been too.
Fireworks on my neighbor in the back, she was.
He bought them all. Um, one of the other challenges that we face and and it has been brought up in these meetings as well is just enforcement. Yeah, we we can make those restrictions, we don't have the personnel and the and the police as well. It's really difficult, I've been out in those western neighborhoods, you know, on the Fourth of July in the evenings. And you'll see fireworks go up, and by the time you can drive and figure out where they're coming from.
Yeah.
They've either gone inside or you don't see anything that is illegal or or whatever, so it it is difficult. I have seen a lot of police officers out there during those times, and I, we appreciate the help that we get from them, um. So we wanted to come for you tonight, just kind of to talk a little bit about what what we see and what we would like to see. But obviously, according to the state law, it's the legislative body that enacts the the restrictions, so. Um, one of the things that we looked at was just potentially moving if if the council's. Um, general feeling was to broaden and open up more areas, like we talked about some of those neighborhoods that have now developed on the west side. We would feel comfortable if we moved that restriction back to U one eleven, part of the reason we've chosen U one eleven. Is the state requires that it be an easily identifiable landmark or something that people can readily say. This is where the restriction is. But the big part for us is that once we get west of U one eleven, if we allow those neighborhoods that are west, we no longer can make access from the west to a fire. Um, if there's a fire east of U one eleven, we can get our apparatus around to the western edge and kind of protect from going up the hills. We get beyond that, you've got the the train tracks that we can't get our apparatus over except way further down south. Um, and it gives fires a chance to run, which that's what we don't want, is anything to run up the mountain, so.
What about the uh, wash? Like the Bingham Creek.
Yeah, those are, those are currently restricted as well, um, it, the the code allows for two hundred feet either direction of a waterway, so. You know, if if there are any homes that actually back right along that, you know, potentially that two hundred feet could go. Maybe into the street, the middle of the street, but I, I really, I hesitate to get into. My neighbor on one side of the street can do fireworks. My neighbor on one side can do fireworks, but just across the street I can't, kind of thing, I. You know, so that two hundred feet on the waterway, we've just identified them in the map, it's like, these are waterways, they've got a lot of brush and whatever. Uh, they're dry waterways, most of them, some of the canals obviously have water, but.
If there was a fire in one of those, would you be able to affect it?
Yeah, mo- most of those we would access through yards. Um, so we would, we would have to come through yards to step our hoses to that, but but we could do it, most of them are accessible. Our our concern with things like that is not so much the wash, I mean, if if the brush burns, that that's no real loss, but. Most of those have fences along them that, you know, belong to people, sheds that are out on the edge of their property, things like that. We don't want to get in a situation where we've got high property loss, you know, the weeds, that's that's kind of one thing, but. Um, so really what we're hoping to hear from you is just. Kind of what you guys would like to see and what you've heard from your constituents, if we need to change something. What you feel comfortable with, if you'd rather keep things the same for next year.
Do you have anything slides that you can?
Yes. Do you have, yeah, if you can pull it up.
That's the current map.
That's the current map, yep, and so we've, we've discussed coming this way. You want eleven, that just cuts out this neighborhood right here. Um, one of the other things that that does is makes the enforcement much easier because it's less of a giant geographic area that the police are trying to. To watch things for, so. That's kind of what we feel, but again. You know, we'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
Are we balancing enforcement versus potential issues then? Is that what this sounds like?
Well, those are, I mean, issues are, obviously the fire dangers are biggest concern, and I know I've heard enforcement is also a concern, and it is for us as well, I mean. But if we were to do that, we kind of eliminate two of those. Or or we narrow, I I guess we give one up and we, I'd want a little bit better.
The thing that, the thing that gets me is is just the the common sense kind of. You like the the make it make sense, right? Like there's, like on this map, the, if you look at the corner of seventy eight hundred south and forty eight hundred west. There's a great, we call it the Albertson's property, Peterson's finally developing, and now there's going to be a senior housing in there. Um, but it's a big empty field with a lot of weeds. And it's perfectly legal, we go out, stand in the middle of that field and light off a firework. According to the map. Is it smart? No, is it stupid? Yes, but.
Oh, forty eight.
But it's not restricted, right? But I can't go to the middle of the neighborhood in the Oaks. Or in the Maples where I live and light up fireworks in the middle of the street.
And I think, you you know, you you make a great point, and I think the, where we've hesitated in the past with that. Part of these, these other little areas that you see, those are city parks, because obviously we can't do those there. Um, the code does mention one of the, I'll I'll just briefly read it to remind you, we um. If the existing or historical hazardous environmental conditions exist in a municipality. The legislative body of the municipality may prohibit the ignition or use of an ignition source in. Mountainous, brush-covered, forest-covered or dry grass-covered areas. Within two hundred feet of waterways, trails, canyons, washes, ravines or similar areas. Three, the wildland urban interface area, which means the line area or zone where structures. Or other human development meet or intermingle with the undeveloped wildland or land being used for an agricultural. Or land being used for an agricultural purpose. And then this last one kind of applies to what you were saying. Or number four, a limited area outside the hazardous areas described in this paragraph. To facilitate a readily identifiable closed area in accordance to paragraph two. So. The code. Kind of prohibits us from just doing spots throughout the city of like all our fields. Uh.
I think that does not fall under dry grass covered areas. One point, one point one.
It's, it certainly could. I think that. The hard part of those, can we make it readily identifiable? So that, and I, I guess we could, like the parks, you know, you could go through and say. But it's not the field itself that's a threat. Usually it's all the homes around it that are doing the fireworks. So.
Uh, just north of us, where's their cutoff line for the west?
Just north of us. I did have that pulled up. Um. Their city actually has developed a little bit more. Can you? Hey, Warren, can you pull up, if you just search. UFA. Uh, fireworks restrictions, it'll pull up an interactive map that will show the rest of the valley with the other cities and.
The other one is like, is like the property, well, there's the, the property around fortieth and ninetieth. Where the Cornbellies Maze is.
Um, yeah.
Is a big section. And then the, what is becoming, uh, the Ivory, um. Chris McConaughey's neighborhood.
Yep.
Jones Ranch.
Jones Ranch, thank you.
Dry, dry. Highlands or whatever the heck it is.
The challenge we run into, I think. And, and why we're more concerned about the west side. We, we could certainly have fires in any of these areas. We have a lot of agricultural land. There's not a lot we can do about that. If we have a fire, we go try to put it out.
The agricultural land is the reason why that big chunk down by Drag Walk Jaguar Lanes.
Oh, that's the golf.
Yeah. That's the golf course. But there's some homes in, in that area.
Yeah.
And, and neighborhood that's been banned.
Those are areas where we will have fires, but they're not fires that are going to potentially run up the mountain and cost the state hundreds of thousands of dollars. Get totally out of control. I don't know that we'll ever be able to eliminate fires. I would love it, but as we look at the data, that's never the case.
As you look at it, and, and a compromise could be Mountain View.
Yeah, but again, like.
As soon as showing the colors much, but you can see West Jordan here. And that looks like. West Valley's basically done the same with U one eleven and they've got a. Big chunk right here, but.
Big chunk is, is that Hercules?
I think that's, yeah, probably.
I agree with, I agree with Zach saying, so let me give you an example. So I live off of thirteen hundred west and. Uh, you know, the Jordan River is really close, but the people that are. Um. East of thirty, they can still light it in certain areas. So it's real close. But then you have this whole chunk from Mountain View to U one eleven that's, you know, Ivory and where you used to live. It's, it's, it's exactly like my neighborhood. It's no different.
Yeah.
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 So that they can. And I, they can light fireworks just like in my neighborhood.
Yeah, and I think in twenty twenty one, when we went to the.
It wasn't a development.
It. It wasn't as developed, and I think that the general feeling, I, I think with the council as well as the rest of the valley and the state was. We want to ban as much as we can possibly get away with. I, I remember Rob Wall saying, we're maybe pushing the envelope a little bit with. What we had done with fifty sixth. I mean, it was, we could, we could justify it, we could defend it. But we were starting to get into that gray area. And so that's why we ended up where we did. But I agree with you. I mean, you, you could, some of those things you could carve out.
Is, is there maybe, maybe a restriction map is not the, is not the mechanism that. That I'm thinking of. Maybe it's just, don't be an idiot, but how do you legislate that?
The legislative.
Like, like if we had something. Now, some, like you said, on this map, there are areas where you could go in and light off fireworks and you immediately have a problem.
Some people put their smoldering fireworks in a garbage can with their house on fire.
Well, then, and they're sad. But there's, but when they do that, it's their house, right? If they put it in somebody else's garbage can, then you've got a problem. But, um, but what I'm thinking of is just, if there's a. You know, the state is flirted with this idea of, you know, you start a fire in the mountains, you're responsible for what happens there. You slide a firework off in a place where maybe it's not. Restricted on a map, but common sense should dictate that you don't light fireworks there. Then we got to think, I went up the week after the fourth of July. It was the twenty fourth, I don't remember. I went for a walk up west of my neighborhood, left, up the Oker West neighborhood. Went for a walk to that neighborhood. And it was literally on the edge of that neighborhood. The north edge where the railroad tracks come around between, um, that development and Normal Woods property. On the edge there, like. Dry grass everywhere. And there's boxes and boxes of spent fireworks that you know, haven't been moved since they were lit. That's where they lit them. And that was like, it was a safe place for a campfire because they cleared, you know. It was in a, a dirt area and it was kind of cleared, but. Aerial fireworks aren't a campfire, right? They're meant to have a range.
And, and I think to the point we've made, enforcement is the difficult part. I mean. Eh, eh, everything knows that people are still doing fireworks sometimes in these restricted areas, but how do we?
So is it, is it a liability issue, right? It's like, okay, if you can do it safely and you don't start any fires. Have a good time. But if you're taking unnecessary risks. That put the community at risk, that put your neighbor's house at risk or whatever it is, that's maybe a source issue. No, I'm going to ask the city attorney. Is there a way? That if somebody set off a stupid fire because of fireworks. And we bill them, do what we need to do, cover the costs of the fire, settle liability issue. And make the liability issue.
In some circumstances, the statute does provide it. I don't know that it would be, uh, in any circumstance. That we could say, yeah, we'll do it. Then obviously there are the same kind of causation questions of trying to identify who the responsible party is that we would always run into. Um. So, so I'm, I'm reluctant to just say yes. Um.
Stop us now. It's a stupid area to light up fireworks.
But, but the, you know, part of me says, I mean, you're, you're held liable if you set off a dang forest fire, right? Um, if, if part of me says that. Maybe one of the bigger deterrents is, you know. And it goes along with some education is that. If you're liable for the costs of the fire department, maybe, maybe you won't think about it. Be a little smarter, but maybe you'll be a little bit smarter knowing that it might cost you more than just a two hundred dollar ticket.
Also, obviously you have questions to solve and seeing people's ability.
Right.
You know, post the regulations that we come to.
But the point is, it's a deterrent, right? The point is you put it out there as a deterrent. The, the point is that the city wants to collect on this information. The point is that the city wants this not to happen. Right? See, the, the other question that I have is, okay. Let's just, let's just say we ban fireworks. West of U one eleven. Which I agree with. Wait, I mean, I, I thought you said ban fireworks. Sorry, I thought you were. But we, we ban the firework. In an, in, in an area where eventually there's going to be, I mean, you got terrain being built, you got. Um, the Peterson property that they want to build, you got Sycamores, and then you got south of that, you're going to have Jones Ranch and south of that, you got. Jones and Ivory talking about something else. So there's a lot of stuff on the west side. I think that's always going to be banned west of U one eleven because we don't want to deal with the foothill issue. But the question is, do we have the ability, whether it's Ronwood Park or some other place. Where we can designate and say, come have fun with your fireworks, set them off here. And, and do that as opposed to. Saying, sorry, you don't get to enjoy the fun with the rest of the city, but what we do allow you is you can't do that. And if you come. Someplace that we've designated, you can set them off and have a good time.
I think. My, I would. First off, I defer to risk and to the attorneys as far as liability for something like that, you know, injuries or. Whatever, but. The other thing would be identifying a place where we could do that. I mean, currently we can't do it in city parks. We would have to adjust something there. To do that. I don't, you know, and, and do we want to risk? What that might entail. I, I don't know.
We did it in twenty seventeen.
Where, where at?
We had a lot of firework issues on the fourth of July, so we did an emergency council meeting in between the fourth and the twenty fourth. And we said the ban in the whole city. Except for in Veterans Memorial Park and Ronwood Park. And it just so happened that it rained like crazy on the night of the twenty fourth. But it was cool because everybody came to Ronwood Park and you had a show. And it went on for hours. All in the park. And you had the fire apparatus there waiting. If anything went wrong, they were on site, right? You had it planned for. So like you said, there's nothing there to, there's nothing there to light, really. It's green grass for the most part and parking lot, right? I mean. They were lighting them off on in, in fields of the top of diamonds.
My, my concern there, and that's why I, I think about liability is. If you had such a big group and everybody doing different fireworks, you know, you have one tip over and it's shooting into the crowd and you have that kind of stuff. It, it could end up being. More of a, a danger.
Feels like that San Diego one, see on YouTube.
Or a shooting a fire.
I'd just like to propose to the council, we accept Chief Maxfield's reclamation of U one eleven. Who's in favor?
Well, we're not voting on it tonight, but that'll. But procedurally, we can either say, yes, we want to study it more, yes, that's fine to move to the. To the, to the business.
We're just required to turn in the map by May first.
I would also, I would include south of New Bingham Highway in that. But, yeah.
Well, so, so what we would do is based on the direction the council gives, we have a brings a, a map to adopt in spring of twenty twenty five. Prior to May first, so we can submit it to the county. That would be the outcome for tonight.
Which means we're referring it out of the committee.
We're out of here with where you want the map to be, if it's, if it's U one eleven or Mountain View or wherever. And then GIS and fire can work on the map and then we'll bring it to you. February, March.
Yeah.
Just to a council meeting for adoption so that the fire department has, uh, the map to present to the county.
See, see, my biggest, my biggest concern. Of when we, when we shifted west to U one eleven, my biggest concern is right behind the fire station. At, at, at sixty fourth, right behind there. And over. In the, in the, in the field where all the antelopes still live, um, on, on sixty fourth at ninetieth. It, it's, it's, it's those couple of pockets on ninetieth and sixty fourth and, and seventy eighth and sixty fourth. Concern me the most there is the, is the area behind. The fire station.
That's the red line on the west side.
That's the wash, but on, but the, the fire station's on the other side of seventy eight. It's on the north side.
The thing that chief was saying is that those are fires he can fight.
Uh, no, that's the south side. Isn't the ma- the map north up? Yeah, but that's going right across seventy eight hundred south. That red line. Is encompasses seventy eight hundred south.
No, it does.
Yeah, so you, yeah.
He's talking right up here. That's where he's talking. Right now it's banned because it's. Yeah, this is where that station is, where it's behind.
I'm looking farther to the east. No wonder I'm screwed up. Okay. So we would be okay there.
Yeah, that's already banned.
Because that's already banned down that wash.
I think what you have to think about is exactly what he said. It is. We, they're lining up fireworks in all of these areas anyway. They can't control it. If we, if we. Shrink the area to control, they have a chance of maybe controlling it. And as Zach said. There are other areas, you know?
All right, like you said, I'm just.
New Bingham and fortieth is my back door. And that, you know, I can tell you, nobody's caring. They're lighting up plenty of fireworks here, there.
I'll still hear from the Sycamores and the High Point neighbors, the west neighbors.
Yeah.
Why is the middle of my neighborhood not safe?
That's what you give.
Where's Stokesley?
Well, it's the, the north, south on the, it goes right through the middle of the Sycamores.
Lighting in the Sycamores isn't, the middle isn't, that's not the problem. It's the, it's the easily identifiable way. And you start to worry about neighborhoods.
That we need an easy life.
Hopefully the wide road, it's, it's got a center turning lane.
What, how does Stokesley work when it intersects with the, the wash there? We're going to add the new park. Or expand.
On the north side, there's a roundabout there, and then there's a little, a little pocket park right there.
Yeah, okay.
One thing I want to see, and I, I really don't know if it's a, if it's a big deal, but we looked down, I think at number seven, I talked about a rest of it's. Rest handler that sells fireworks shelf play, a sign that. And I, I see nothing that says any of the stipulations of the size of that sign. Um. That really sets to me anything. I know that I've gone to fireworks places and. I've seen various sizes of, of things. I think we should stipulate. The, like a sign size, I would, I would even love seeing it if in some of the places when they buy the fireworks. If it's another little flyer that either gets taped to the big box or put inside a bag with their fireworks. That was, that just kept the education going. Because I think a lot of the reason why people are setting out fireworks in some of these places is because they just completely. They're excited about fireworks. They're paying for something. They've got kids running around and they get it and go. They didn't see that there was a sign maybe. Off to the side or something like that. So I think we can do a better job with the communication. Uh, and the education. I'm just making sure when you buy something, if it's like I said, just taping, here's the map and here's the, you know, the, uh. The times and the. The times, the dates and the, and then here's the Zach, don't be an idiot degree at the bottom.
Yeah, I always found that odd that you can buy fireworks in a banned area, but we couldn't. Use fireworks in a banned area. That always.
Yeah, I, I come up in quite a few areas.
My cigarette's at a gas station, but you can't smoke.
Yeah, but so that's why I was just saying this. I think, I think we can do a little better too in the education and.
How, how will you?
What can we require? I mean, I think Bob's, Bob's got some good ideas here.
We can go stricter than state statute. We just can't go less strict.
Can we, can we be more strict to say, when you get a business license to sell fireworks in West Jordan. That the requirement's got to be that you give every person a map that says those kind of, you know. Some education and we require those things for every sale.
Probably, uh, is the best I can say. There, there is some language at the beginning of this code section that we've been looking at that. Always potentially be read as a presumption. I don't think that's the way that it was intended, and I would argue that that's not how it should be read. I know there are some other cities who have imposed more stringent requirements. Way of fireworks are sold. And to me, this kind of a proposal would fall into line with that. And so I would think that we could do it, whether we accomplish that through business license, license kind of provision. Or if it's a provision that's targeted just at that transaction of the fireworks sale. Uh, you know, I think we have a couple of different alternatives that we could potentially look at for.
Because everybody's going to come in, I mean, the way, the way to start that would be, everybody's going to come in and get the business, the temporary business, should. Remember to say that, should come in and get temporary business license at the start of the summer or whatever they're going to do or January first for New Year's. They, they should be able to, to, to sign an agreement or say something that says, yeah, we're going to do that. Then the code says, we're going to enforce that. Um, and, 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 and that's, I, I will have to tell you.
I have a question because I don't know if anyone in this room knows that I look at players, but. It does Smiths, does Walmart have to go in and sign for that?
I'm, I'm wondering the same thing because I don't remember seeing a sign.
And I don't see how you're going to get, I think it's great to want to help control, but. I don't know how you do that in all scenarios. Sure, for the guy that has a small business. Who sells fireworks, you can do that. But when you're at these other businesses, I don't think they have to get a special.
No, they probably don't have to.
Sell fireworks. And I don't have the appetite to say, small business owner that's trying to make a, a little bit of money. Now you have to. Print all these things out and ensure that you give them to everyone. If we want to educate our public, I think we should be educating our public. We can do that with. Electronic sites, we can do that with email pushouts, we can do that on our water bills. I think there's lots of avenues we can use. And if we want to spend the money, we can send a mailer. And educate, but I don't.
I, I, I think people toss the mailer, it doesn't matter. And I, I think we've done some of the other stuff.
But if I put it in my bag, I'm going to talk to them too.
Yeah, but, but point, point is, you know, you stick something on it before you peel it off, especially if there was red letter saying. Fireworks, uh, displayed in a wrong place can mean a, you know, spying, blah, blah, blah. You saw that, you might.
I think that's something that the city needs to pay for then, and not the.
Yeah, well, we can, that's just.
Yeah, well, we can, that's just, that's just.
That's something to consider, okay.
I think Derek's only here. He just wants to know what line we want.
We're getting beyond the scope of the.
I, well, yeah, but it's a good conversation to have and we're not.
It is.
I'm good with the recommendation of the fire department for they see the line to be, they, they would know it better than us.
I would, I would actually. Ask that you'll look at Stokesley and see if that makes sense.
I don't know.
Me, Stokes is too close to that. A lot, lot to the mountains. That's just.
Anyways, yes. We do this at every topic, don't we?
But if you can't, if we can't allow it in the whole.
So the majority of the council is good for U one eleven and us bringing back. Do a referral. You want me to do the formal one, Alan?
I think we've got the feedback. Let's, we'll. See, get, see with the fire.
We'll plan on doing that sometime. Like I said, hopefully March, April somewhere in there, so that GIS has enough time to do what they need to do with the county, but.
Well, you heard the feedback, so.
Yep, okay. Thank you. That's what we need.
We'll have another discussion come springtime.
Do you want to just go to council in springtime or a work session?
Thank you. Maybe, maybe not at the last minute, just in case. Now like, oh crap, we have to submit this next week. Here it is, vote. That's what happened last year. Yeah, yeah.
So next item up is a presentation of the Veteran Memorial Mark. Veteran Memorial Park Master Plan. Royal Park Master Plan, M P M P. And this is, uh, oh, Cory. Yeah, delete the discussion.
I'll take the lead. Yeah. So thank you for having us. Uh, we're excited to. Present the plan to you guys. We've been working on this for quite a while. Before we start, uh, I'll kind of just give you the, uh, there's a lot of pictures. I'm gonna throw a lot at you, a lot of visuals at you. One of the ways we've kind of broken it down is, is referring to it as a buffet. All right. You go to a buffet and there's a lot of things that are. We're gonna try and feed you a whole lot, but then. Break it down for you a little bit here as we go through this process. So. Uh, it's kind of a pick and choose. We'll go through all the different details, but, um. Yeah, we'll get into it. So. As we went through this process, we started, uh, we wanted feedback from the council. What are we looking for as we, as we create this master plan? Up here, some of the, are the top things that we, the feedback we got from the council when we started this process. And so we, as we started this project. We tried, we incorporated all of these points into our master plan. All of these are addressed. All of these are, are part of the new plan moving forward. So, um. So our preferred scenario, cut, cut some of the key points that you're gonna see in here, um. We liked having that central loop in the park. You drive through the park. We wanted to keep that here. Uh, we wanted to keep that accessible. We wanted that, kind of that spine to the city or to the park. We've added some gardens and some, some different monument points that will, will draw. People into the park and kind of help activate parts of the park that haven't been activated before. Uh, we've added some splash pads and some other opportunities for kids to again, kind of expand their footprint in the park. We've touched on in this about the rodeo grounds. Um, we're not gonna go into a ton of depth on expansion, but we have, we have. A plan and a footprint for that expansion and kind of what we'd like to see there. Um, and then just moving some facilities to make. The park accessible or traffic during our big events, uh, throughout the year, so that. It doesn't feel cut off from the rodeo or from the arts building the park. There's a good flow, uh, of traffic here. So we'll, we'll kind of jump into it and ask questions. Yep, so this is. Big picture, this is the entire park and this is kind of what we've, what we've come up with. Again, throwing a whole bunch at you as far as information and as far as new things. So.
Just had a general question. I went through your stuff that you've submitted to us. And it was presented as here's our preferred plan. So were there other options?
There were some other options as we brainstormed. There was some get rid of the ring, the circle road and. Basically start over. Um, and when we were presented with that plan, there, we went through the pros and cons of it and, and tried to cater to the list that we had from the council. And decided that we wanted to stay with the footprint that we had. And expand and add the different amenities within the park. So there was a couple of options.
I just think, I just think it would be nice when we're being given stuff as the council that we're given.
All options, sure.
Because. That's great that this is your preferred plan. And you bring. The knowledge of your experience and, and your, all your education and everything, but we bring. Our community.
Sure.
And so when you just bring something to me that says, here's our preferred plan, I think. Then why am I here? If you're just going for this and all you're coming to me for is money. And why are we having this stuff? I would hope that you'd agree, you'd at least include them in our.
I think they're saying you this or else. I think they're just saying, here's an idea and then.
The complete packet that is.
It says, here's our preferred plan, check it. I just like.
Yeah, but it doesn't say this is the plan, do it or else.
The complete packet attached to the RCA there. Then there's a PowerPoint presentation.
And, and this is kind of a, like I said, a buffet pick and choose. There are elements in this park and as we go through this presentation, if you don't. If, if collectively as a group, we say, oh, we're not interested, it doesn't have to be added. There, we'll have some flexibility and, and again, yeah, we can, we can get you those other plans and, and show you those, but this is. Everything included in this one plan and it's pick and choose as we go through this, so. Um, we'll go down and we'll kind of break it into the, into four quadrants and you guys can get into a little bit more detail. Any questions that you have, I'll, I'll kind of point out. The blue circles here are existing features that are currently in the park that we're either keeping or we're going to add. Whether it's landscaping or adding some fitness elements to the park, everything in yellow. Um, we're maybe moving to a new location in the park. And then everything in red, the, the red circles are new amenities that will be added to the park. So it kind of teaches you or shows you where we're going throughout this process. So this is the southwest quadrant. Of the park and you'll see a lot of parking lot. Mostly parking lot, um. This has been, we've kind of incorporated this area as kind of the. You know, the hub, but where everyone's going to come and, and, and be able to access during. The rodeo, there, there's a, a plenty of parking for people. We're not parking in neighborhoods. We're not parking. Miles down the street, we're adding. People, we're, we're adding space for people to get close and, and be in a, in a place where they can access the rodeo without. And they'll still be parking in neighborhoods, but we've expanded that footprint, um.
More parking is definitely needed. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, and I'll give you even more parking.
Here's, here's my question with the parking. One, it's a lot of asphalt. It's a lot of impervious. Surface, stormwater issues. And it doesn't. Okay. I'm gonna say this, but it doesn't make sense to preserve or open space by having it be asphalt.
Sure.
So. The first thing I wonder here is. Are there? Better uses in this area? That we can put. The, the, the stuff down under the grass. So that you can park on grass and it doesn't rip it up. Uh, what if, that grid, the, the grid stuff. So that it's more of an open space that you can play on it, do some things. Can we put? Tennis courts, can we put basketball courts? What, what, so I'm gonna, and you'll hear me say this again in another section. What we're doing is designing a one-use facility. In a city park. And are there ways that we can? Get multiple uses out of things? So, because right now the rodeo, and even if we span the rodeo. Grounds and we get the rodeo grounds to be used thirty nights a year. There's three hundred and thirty-five other days in the year that somebody might want to use a park, right? And so my question is. Can we do some things so that? People can use the park three hundred and thirty-five days a year. But, and, and it's not asphalt. Um, but the, during the three hundred and thirty-five days a year, people can use it and those. Uh, thirty days a year, we turn that into auxiliary parking and park, park there. And, and make it accessible to the parking, like the parking lot, but. You, you know where I'm going?
I know, yep, yep. And that, that is possibility, right? This is. One solution and, and as we went through this process, we met. We walked the park, we met with residents, we met with maintenance staff, we met with. All different kinds of users and said, you know, what does the park need? And one of the, one of the top feedback we got was. I need somewhere to park. I come here on a Saturday and I want to play soccer with my four-year-old and I've got to walk a mile. To get to the field, right? Because it's full at six o'clock in the morning. And it's full all day long. And so you'll see that we've added parking and, and maybe this is too much parking and we can look at some of those options that. Can we make a field and multipurpose it, but. With the idea of. Everything activating in this park that we're gonna, that we're planning for, this would be the parking that would kind of support. All of the events that we're planning to add to this park.
A lot of this is already parked.
A lot of it is.
And a lot of it's parking.
Yeah.
Senior Center and the, and there's already, um, right center parking is part of this.
Yeah, essentially this is all parking already. This would be our new parking.
A little bit.
Yeah, and I would, and I would say that. Kind of, I, I, I don't hate where you're going with that. But this quadrant isn't the place to do that. This quadrant. It, it doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense to put more grass on the far side of the rodeo ground from the park. You know what I mean? That makes more sense to do it. But adjacent to the existing.
What I'm saying is, is that we're creating a single use something. And can we be more creative in creating multiple uses? For. The park than just say, we're gonna have five acres, six acres in our twenty acre park. I don't know how much that is. But we're, we're saying that we're gonna dedicate five, six, ten acres in the park. For nothing but asphalt. And, you know, that.
You got the arts community center that's going to need parking, so that's.
So, I, I, I don't disagree with that, but. You, you see the number of new parking lots there. One, does it, does it? Create the space that we need for rodeo, the rodeo and the horses and their trailers to park. And get in and out of Dodge. And two, does it? It, it just seems like, yeah, we need parks, we need some parking for a couple of these buildings. But how much new parking do we need that we could use? And turn into multiple use, even. Even if it's.
Yeah, a basketball.
Even if it's asphalt, even if it's asphalt, right? There's no reason why we couldn't do some things that if we're planning a parking lot, right? That you have a couple, you have lights in the parking lot and you light a couple of basketball courts and the basketball courts are. Either concrete or asphalt out there and during the, the rodeo stuff, we park on them. So that's what I'm suggesting is.
Drainage slopes on those.
We can talk about.
Rain in the parking lot anyway.
I mean, we're not talking a lot of expanded, but this is a. The rodeo grounds is an expanded rodeo, so an increase in parking, what you're bringing in almost double the size of rodeo. You can't have the same size of parking.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting is not eliminating the parking. I'm suggesting having using it. Using it multi-use.
Yep.
That it's more than just a piece of asphalt that sits there as a piece of asphalt for three hundred and thirty-five days. A year or more. It's a multi-use that on asphalt, it's painted. As basketball or it's concrete and we put tennis courts on it. You know, multiple different things, but, cause you can park on a tennis court, right? You can park on a basketball court. You can, you can. You, there, there are things that you, that, that's all I'm saying is you can't play baseball on a tennis court.
But you could do roller derby.
Yeah, and that's, and I, and, and that's gonna be one of my other comments. That's where we get to the roller.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get there.
Okay, let's. You see where I'm going.
I give, yeah, totally understand that. Yep.
Can I ask a question? Cut this up here.
Yes.
Modified detention and soccer fields. Are those gonna be built into a detention basins?
Yes, so the thought in that is we're just adding the green space. Uh, it wouldn't be a, a space that we would say, hey, you can reserve this area. But it would be, you know, if you can come and practice, you can bring your kids here to play T-ball, you, whatever, it just adds that element.
Because it's a detention basin, it's not reservable, right?
Isn't there a water basin there for the? Sprinklers?
That's what.
It is for the.
Correct, yep.
That fishing pond is.
We're, we're following Councilmember Green's advice of multiple uses for the water.
I like, I like that.
Right, right now it's blocked off because we don't want people.
Yeah.
If we change the name, it'll be okay, check.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think you can open that up. Can you?
You can't, yeah, there's, yeah, you can, as a fish, there's other cities that have them, that have their fishing ponds.
Yep, alright, because right now it's like a.
Just have to have. See, I think we ought to have R C boat races on. I already told the mayor that once, so.
Okay, let's, let's move to the next section. So this is moving north, uh, along twenty-two hundred west.
Yeah, let's. The dog park. So since we've developed this, we've, we've explored the other side of tracks, just to the south. There's property there. We've just received permission from U T A, use that as a dog park on that side. So now we're exploring. So that's, when we say this is all a car, that's what we mean, like, we're already picking and choosing somewhere else that we can use it. That makes sense. That's what we'd have to look at, redeveloping something different. We just found that out.
Question about this, this site. Before we move on, um. At the rodeo, especially on the night of the fourth of July, I believe. It took about an hour to get out after the rodeo. It's over. It looks like you, you're working to mitigate that. That snarl of traffic after the rodeo is over. Could you talk about how you've approached that?
I'll go back to the main. So, yeah, we, we, that's one of the big things that we've taken into account is just the flow of the park, traffic of the park. Um, creating multiple access. Um, obviously this road, we, we've designed some of these curves for the longer trailers for the horse. Uh, the rodeo people, we've designed it so that they can enter and use some of this area as their staging area still. Um, but also designed it that you can access the road here, here, here. You can get across the park if, if, if we were to open that, generally it's closed for the carnival. Um, but also coming down through this area of the park. Uh, just off of the road in front of, of City Hall here. So we've kind of activated this back area as a way to filter people both onto twenty-two and back out to Redwood Road. From this end of the park.
It looks a lot better.
Yeah, so.
I'm, I'm just gonna follow up with what Councilmember Shelton said. That this past fourth of July. Going west was actually pretty easy. It's, it's going east out of that parking, going east past Viridian. That is horrid to get out.
Down here.
Yeah, and so, uh, as we're designing, as we're, it's that coming down the backside of Viridian.
Or to get out of what?
To, to get out of the, to get out of the parking lot and get onto a road. I waited over an hour and a half and turned, and actually flipped to you and went out west because it was faster. Because, because coming east.
That's a traffic control issue, not a.
Well, it's, it's a road design issue as well.
Yeah, but I mean, it's traffic control for events.
Anything you can do going west.
But this helps to in that lower, you can like say head south and then head west, cause it connects to that new road to the south. So you'll be able to go a Viridian way to the north or kind of flip around to the west, if that makes sense.
There's, there's multiple additional access to. To twenty-second and Redwood, I see, so.
Yeah, we tried to add that.
Traffic with when this is implemented, traffic will be much better.
Yep, we tried to add it so that we can get traffic, people moving in the right place and then the police, as police are helping guide traffic, it doesn't create. Multiple cars going in different directions and hopefully we'll keep that flow moving as as traffic exits the park. Okay, so a couple of the the big things you'll see here, um, we've moved. We've we've thought about, one of the, one of the top things when we were given the list from the council was our fairgrounds and making sure that that was. Visible, um. It's right now, it's kind of tucked behind buildings, it's kind of in the middle of the park, which is great. Um, but it's high, not, it's low visibility and so one of the things that we've done here is moved. Our baseball fields uh to the outer edge of the park and opened up. Um, potentially this of this area here to hold and to house our. Our events closer, a little bit more visibility along our main roads here. Um, it pushes some of the amenities to kind of, or some of the sports fields to be all in the same area. So if you're coming to the park and your kids are playing in multiple fields, they're all kind of in that same location. There's some pros and some cons to that as we've, as we've gone through and kind of refined this, um. One of the biggest changes you'll see is currently right now, right here, there's a baseball field. And uh, we we talked about, you know, the pros and cons of moving that, but uh, the best thing I've. It does get used, it's used quite heavily.
My drive by it, it's used more for the grass area than for baseball.
Correct, that is true. The the county uses it, they they program the outfield for soccer and different things. Um, we would still allow them to have that space, we would move over here um and gain some of that space here. The reason we put this parking here is because when you come into the park currently, if you enter the park, you're committed to going through. This entire circle and if your parking lot, your parking stalls empty here, by the time you get around, generally, it's not, by the time you get around. So one of the things that we talked about was if. For an event or anything, we were to close this road down, this would give us access still for people to come in and say, you know what, I'm going back out. Rather than committing and coming in and making the whole loop through traffic or or whatever. Um, it makes it easy for events, if we put a roadblock here. We can still house people, they can get closer to the event, they're not parking on the road, they're in a parking lot and it brings them into the park. And and activates that.
I'm not seeing parking spots drawn on the loop.
They would still be there, yes, yep. The exact footprint that we have now would still be the same, but as far as parking around the loop, yep.
Uh, that question, just in, you know, maybe you want to keep the fairgrounds a little bit more, but. If you're trying to get it visible with the fairgrounds where you're putting all the ballparks. Be just as good and leave the ballparks where they are. And and then you're, is that, I mean, is that?
We talked about that, but we talk, you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of moving parts into carnival, kids running in and out of things. We wanted to keep them away from.
And that's what I wondered, that was the thought.
Yep, and the fields are visible through the fields, there's no buildings, there's no structures that that block that side of you from the road. And so we we decided, you know what, it's a buffer.
Corey, those those fields, the ones in the middle right now, the league that was there is now not there anymore, right?
It's it's reserved for overflow, we're looking at other ways to activate it to.
But they're not being used like they were.
Not like they were.
Replacing six baseball fields with three.
With five, with, there's five?
There's five right now.
Well, there's counting the one.
But we are so to be candid, uh, we're exploring other options like that we could do in-house that we might open the fields up more. This is kind of a lower, I would say a lower.
Well, they're not being used.
Yeah, to me, it's, I mean, if the emphasis of the park is the stampede, this is great, but.
Cuz you gotta cross. There's, there's probably actually enough space for two, if we needed to. Um, depending on the surface material, in that, in that top part of the the circle. Right there where Tyler's pointing now, you could put two more fields in there. And then, and and once again, this goes back to to multi-purpose. All right, wh- what's the purpose of those fields? And if we were gonna use them for something else. I mean, for example, you know, if it's AstroTurf, Artificial Turf, you can make a whole field out of Artificial Turf. Still use it for fairgrounds, but still use it for an all, a year-round playfield.
Well, you'd have to take out all the backstop and everything else, but baseball's not just played in opening fields other than field.
Yeah, but there's, there's plenty of backstops there, or I've seen plenty of portable backstops.
We're not gonna get portable backstops, that's.
So.
That's crazy.
Keeping on the, keeping on the theme of parking lots.
Portable backstops on a park?
We've added this one, we've also, if you see down here right off of seventy-eight, we've added a parking lot here. Kind of the same, the same idea, if we were to block this road off. Commit to coming into the park and still get out of the park, um.
That's where the uh art center isn't. Oh, no, that's not even that.
There's the museum right here, we're keeping the museum here, it's, there's a whole bunch of larger, older trees here that. We figure we thought, you know, maybe we shrink that to keep some of that green space. But we've got a lot of grass there that isn't being used for.
And it's not being used ever.
Is that where a lot of the carnival people park?
No, no, that's just.
There are a bunch of people.
Let's just make sure we're not building in right away.
That is something that we, yep, we've, we've uh, we've planned into this.
See, this is, this is part of the plan that I don't like is that we're taking out. A whole section of green space and making it asphalt.
And. You're right, we are, we're we're removing some grass, but we're watering grass that isn't getting used. Are there multi-purpose? We could look into that for sure.
We we've got it, we've gotta do something more than just put asphalt there and take out grass because.
The problem, you put more there, you you bring more people, you need more parking, that's where it gets tricky. It's a fine line.
It's a balance, right? It's a, it's a balance, but.
We'll just say there's pickleball courts, so they'll be full.
Eliminating grass, eliminating grass for parking is not. That's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm going. I would love it if you could make islands in the parking lot that preserve some of those trees though. Cuz those trees, and and who doesn't wanna shade a parking spot, right? Those trees are amazing. Some of those trees are just.
And some, yeah, some of them are green and some of them are aging and that's kind of why we went with that. In the next five to ten years, we'll be taking out some of those trees and so we're trying to plant new ones now in areas that make sense, but. Potentially, I mean, those trees are 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 really old, so.
Kelvin, to your point, this, that parking lot of that bottom right corner of this picture. Is a perfect spot for what you're talking about with the, sometimes it's grass and sometimes it's parking. That's a much better spot for that than on the flip side of the rodeo grounds, right? I think that, I think that's a great spot to do something like that, where you can have a convertible, you know, a. That, that asphalt, or not the, the concrete lattice work in the grass to make it park-able. I think that's a, that's a great spot for that.
I had a lot of heartburn with these two parking lots as discussed, um. One thing is that Tyler and uh Corey and the consultants who worked on this, uh. Help me understand is these, these parking lots and maybe not these exact locations, but parking lots outside the ring road. Tyler mentioned allow for uh egress without going all the way around the ring road. Some of our biggest events, actually all of our biggest events in the park, close down the ring road. This actually lets us close down the ring road a lot more frequently and make the ring road itself a recreational amenity. For uh, for joggers, you you know, you've been to Liberty Park, you see people biking around the ring road or.
Do uh, do one of those Christmas drive-through things.
So, I, I, I don't know about the locations, but I've grown to appreciate. The desire to have some parking on the edges of the ring road that allow the ring road to be shut down.
Yeah.
For recreation.
And that's, that's a discussion that we've had. Going back before I was elected. That was a long time.
Like trying to go to a council breakfast and there's no way to get there cuz ring roads are closed.
Right. To the same point, ring road's not shut down three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And so, you know, you have an empty parking lot sitting there. That you can't use for any recreational purpose at all. And so we've gotta balance those, otherwise we're doing ourselves a disservice. Cuz we're dedicating maintenance and everything for a parking lot that gets used fifteen, twenty, thirty days a year. But and then the same with grass. But grass is more likely to be used by people in a park than a parking lot.
Some areas with pickleball.
Would it be cost, would it be cost-effective at all? Like, I don't, I don't see uh kids wanting to play basketball on a hot, paint on hot. Fire pavement, right? But if it was cement, it could be converted to parking when needed. And that'd be much more expensive, I know, but it, could it be cost-effective in the long run? To have cement there versus that could be used for. For basketball courts or for tennis courts or pickleball courts. Where where pavement is less likely to be used for those type of things.
Yeah, I think that's something we can definitely look into is how do we make some of this spaces multi-purpose and. I I think when we talk about the day-to-day in the park. Uh, the playground is a big draw, right? There's always, always people at the playground. But every night when you drive, almost every night in the summer when you drive to the park, this whole end of the park is. Is soccer practices, there's games, there's Pokemon in the park. There's different things going on.
But they use that area where the parking, they use that for pick, I'm driven past and seen multiple picnits just.
Yeah.
Laying out the grass and those kind of things and so.
Yep.
I I don't wanna eliminate that and force them to go someplace else. We hate it, but where you let people, we're trying to get more people in the park, where do you have a park? That's the, that's the hard part, like I hate eliminating grass too, but it's like, we want people here.
And these parking lots.
Busy roads and.
These parking lots are added because.
Seventy-eight hundred south, maybe we oughta buy them.
These parking lots are added because we're bringing in some of these elements that we're gonna kind of get into the new elements of the park. So, um, down here on the, this kind of west or eastern end of this slide here. We've got a splash pad, um, that we want to incorporate into the park. We've also expanded the Veterans Memorial to add almost a a garden area where there will be different plants. Uh, we can expand our monument, we can do some different things to to that. Um, visually, we've created this walkway. Well, we brought our event staff into this planning and said, you know, what are some things you'd like to see? This event, this, this pathway here doubles as almost like a market, a market pathway. If we were to do something during the the carnival that you could come in and set up your tent and people could walk up and down that sidewalk. Uh, we have that kind of down here currently, but it would expand that, it would, it would kind of bring it into the center and help us. Kind of bring some of that flow back and forth from the rodeo grounds. Uh, which is one of the main goals of this, this plan was to try and keep traffic and get traffic moving. So it's not two separate parks, the rodeo and the park. We wanted to keep that flow and so this kind of helps activate. This main corridor of the park. So the parking lots, while it is a lot of asphalt, it's a lot of space. We're gonna bring in some things that pickleball courts, we're gonna expand, we're gonna put a splash pad, we're gonna put. Some other elements as we go to the next one that we'll, we'll show you and hopefully that will make it so that we need these parks.
Um, those mounting screening. Have you considered instead of mounting screening, doing. Like layered seating, so it could be like an outdoor amphitheater there.
Uh, yeah, this is that, that's kind of the vibe that we wanted to go with it and we could, we could make it an amphitheater. But we wanted to add some height into the park and add somewhere where you could sit up and watch. If your kids were playing out here, as a parent, you could kind of sit up elevated and have that view of my kids are down playing and you're not. At level view, everything's level in the park right now, so.
I think an amphitheater would be a good thing in our park. And if you're doing a mounted screening.
Yep, we've, we've dedicated the money this year for.
Yeah, we did do that.
So, what we need to do is make sure the stage goes in a place that makes sense with this. The stage isn't on here.
No, no, it was afterwards.
The stage was after.
After this was completed, yep, so that won't be on this. So this is the rodeo ground, um. I know this is a hot topic, I know this, there's some passion in in this.
Seems it's a work session.
Um, this is the expanded, this is what we, the kind of the footprint that we've got, that we've modeled it after. It's the, when we did this, we looked at other cities and their rodeo grounds. This one has been modeled after Spanish Fork. Um, and we're about, we're doubling the size of of the capacity of what we have right now.
As far as the seating.
As far as seating, yep, sorry.
I think it was between eight, the eighty-four hundred somewhere in there.
Are the seats going to be as spacious as they currently are?
That, I don't, I have no idea. I'm just giving you the footprint in the area to do it and I don't, I don't have how many exact seats, I don't have. How many rest, I don't have any of that information.
It's got, it's got sizing, I think they said from seventy-five to eighty-five hundred in the pandemic.
What I mean saying is we could double the capacity if we could have the size of the people.
That's right, that's your point.
I wish I did. There we go. Um, a couple of the fun things that we talked about, uh, obviously creating a plaza area around. So that it it feels like it's intentional. It invites people, it draws people in when they're on the concourse, they know where they're at, um. We've talked about fence, do we fence it in, do we not fence it in? I I think there's some, there's some different options there. One of the things that we did like was we created this food truck. Um, just to the northeast of the, of the, the rodeo grounds. It will allow for food trucks to pull in, um, and be a part of this event. They can take their food and go into the, the arena, uh, it gives them a designated space where. That's, you know where you, you know where to go to get some food, right, during a a different event.
Seating, I was gonna say, it needs to have permanent type. Seating and shade.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep, so all of that, yeah, some of the little, the little things, the little details that, yeah, we would definitely add some permanent seating, some benching. Uh, garbage cans, those kind, just to make it a really like a hub of food when, when we have an event in.
Why do we need a new concession stand?
Um, just in as an update, the footprint down up there. The range things for the road, cuz the. I think cur- currently where it's not where it's at, it would be further that way, I believe. Yeah, to take out the, add the road there down here a little more. If that makes sense. Just to fit everything else in more.
The, the staging and vendor parking area that. The, yes, this, that area there, um. Is that something that could be opened up for equestrian activities outside of just the rodeo? If it, if we, could we expand an equest, like, create maybe a, an equestrian-type arc in that location? And we're talking about multi-use. Making it more usable throughout the year.
Yeah, I I think if if that's, if there's a need for it, I think that that's something we could definitely plan for. It, right now, the demolition derby and and some of the, the horses and the livestock that we use is all staged in this area. So we wanted to keep that, but yeah, again, if we can multifunction it.
That's a big swath of land that's only used once a year.
In our event staff, yeah, they're currently, we're looking at lots of other opportunities how to reuse it, they're working on. Some good ideas.
So real quick, just kind of wrap up this corner, we 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 looked at that fishing pond, that is currently right now. The water, the wa- the water is being held, watered the park, um, and also where our maintenance yard is. We would move our maintenance yard, um, in this plan, out into the corner. I should have pointed that out in the first, in the first cor- quadrant, but. South of the pool, on the back side of the park.
Dog park was gonna be.
But, yeah, in in the, one of the other versions, if you look at it, that we actually had the. The building where the dog park was on this map, so there's some versatility that we have there now that we're not doing the dog. But yeah, maintenance yard would be moved to that south end out of the way, but still very workable for the park.
See, for me, on the expanded rodeo grounds. I would rather make sure that the floor of the rodeo grounds is concrete. Or something where the rodeo grounds becomes multi-use too. What we're, what we're doing, and I'll just tell you, is we've got the rodeo grounds here and then we got a skate rink, ice rink down in the other area, right? Now, if we did this right, why can't we have skate rink, roller rink, rodeo gr- arena, all in the same area? And it's open to roller skate and ice skate when we're not using it for an event. And not build a separate ice rink, skate rink on the east side of the park. So, you you know, that that's, my suggestion is, is we've gotta think outside the box and say. So you you know, that that's my suggestion is, is we've got to think outside the box and say. What's a multi, you you know, the rodeo grounds has got to be more than a dirt floor. It's got to be able to put. We we have, we need to be able to use it for concerts, skating. And and use it for more things than just the three or four times a year that we put horses on it with dirt.
And one of the concerns of the rodeo people are that there's art parts from the demolition derby. That they find in the dirt, then that would event, that would eliminate that concern, right? Because the dirt would all have be moved out.
One, yes, I I, it's almost to me like the rodeo needs its own work sessions, cause since I, we've been here, I've heard of. Should it be indoor? Should it be outdoor? Should it be, cause like, do we put concrete? Do we, we could spend probably two weeks just talking rodeo. I don't know. But yeah, I think we need to decide what we want it to look like, cause I agree, then that's when we nail down the need though, so we put concrete, what can we do here? Cause it is a big, it's a big project, yes.
Let's just go with footprint. That's where the rodeo ground is, if it will stay, but it'll be cooler and better. Fishing pond will have fish in it.
Fishing pond will have fishing in it.
Little docking right there.
You don't get sucked into the sprinkler system and.
Parcino, parcs, races.
I'm all over.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's part of this corridor that links the park and the rodeo grounds together. It pulls traffic, it makes it visible, it makes it so that you can walk. At any point across this whole area, if you spent the day in the, in the park for the carnival and you're heading to the rodeo, it. It opens that channel up for us. So that's kind of the, the reason we decided to do that fishing pond, open it up, expand that walk area, expand the visibility to.
Take the fences down.
Yep, open it up.
And there you, there you, we have one in our community and it's. So there's some days where you're fighting to get a spot around it, and it's heavily used.
Act.
That's what we've debated, whether you could have fences around it or not. More than likely, it'll be fenced and it'd be, we can, we kind of thought, say, how could we open it up till it'd be kind of fun for the carnival to hear?
The fence, the fence is just not inviting the walk through there. It's, it's offensive.
Oh my gosh.
Offensive.
It's our project.
Good job.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, alright, what storybook land?
Okay, so this is, this is where kind of the, a lot, a lot is added. Um, we've added in this, in the north section of the park as you come off of seventy eight. Um, all of our pickleball courts, basketball courts, tennis courts, a pavilion area, kind of a, 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 a hub of, of courts.
Horseshoe pits.
Horseshoe pits, uh, something we put in there. Um, so. We've added those into this area. Uh, part of the reason we put that parking is to facilitate that, right? We'll bring them right to the side. Permanent cornhole, we can do that. I I'm open to it.
Lawn darts.
Lawn darts?
There's liability. No, you put lawn darts next to the dog park. There you go.
So it would be for the month of July.
It's the four, but yes.
Circle, I even wonder, is that circle a public street or a private road?
That's the private.
Yes, that's for fire to to turn.
I just wondered if it's public or private.
I believe it's private. So, um, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to go through. Skate, we've added a skate park down here in the corner. Um. Some different elements, uh, pros and cons to doing that. Um. In the bottom here, we've added another parking lot.
Is that cir, is that circle pub?
Zach, Zach's saying that circle is public.
According to the city infomant.
I think it's, I think it is public.
It's a fire.
It's a turnaround.
It's, it's a turnaround, but we, there, we, we ought to. I'm just saying, we ought to look at that because, you know, can we expand that a little bit, whatever? So that maybe some people can park in there to go to some of these courts.
I would rather you flip the parking lot at the pickleballs, cause I don't think all that noise is fair to put by those far.
Yeah. That was one of the hazards.
After we did this.
We met with Sully County and he kind of recommended this, saying we could flip those, um, just the given way.
All those, put all the courts across the little.
The ends of those trees, we could possibly leave around the pickleball courts and for shade.
That's actually, that's actually.
It's good to do. Yeah, we were originally just trying to with the fire road, but. Yeah, after we learned that.
Because you could, you could actually have the parking, if the parking was there, enter from the circle and enter from the entrance and go in and out.
Need it to.
What about a heart center right there?
It's highly impactful to people that live on that street.
If they cut through and.
Is that true?
And I don't think that's fair to them. I mean, there's, there's the condominiums and then there's the porplexes and.
So do we just eliminate that turnaround? I don't think.
No, yeah.
Oh, it's a road and it'll be there.
If you put the parking lot on that.
Well, you don't need to do things that encourage people to go there.
If you put the parking on that side, it's gonna be used as a road. Interesting.
Um.
Maybe we should just take the apartments and come and look at them.
What's, what's worse impact all the traffic? It would come from a parking lot or the, or the noise from the pickleball, right? Cause you. It's, it's gonna have impact either way, it seems like.
There they are, yeah, they're lowly and late, they're allowed.
Courts are gonna be, well, and if you wanted those lighted, you don't want them there. If you want them lighted, you're gonna want them on there from the cross.
Any single ball courts do we have out of Ronwood?
Uh, there are four, six, six pickleball courts.
So this has got twenty, is that overkill?
Nope, not nowadays.
I know.
Provo's building one that's forty eight.
Is that part of the new park that's got the hundred thousand soccer field?
Yeah, they've signed the contract.
Put pickleball in there, then that parking lot will get used.
It will be full every day.
The parking lot be full.
That kind of goes back to the point that these are intentional, right? We, we're not building a parking lot to have them sit empty. We're, we're building a parking lot because. For pickleball. That, that's really all that we need to say right there. Um, kind of moving a little bit more east, we, we've added another parking lot and before you. I know that's been the theme here, but this one is also intentional for traffic. Um, it, we've added another access into the park.
Oh, yeah.
Over here, so that you can enter the park, come in and park, and also exit the park.
Where is that access?
This is, uh.
Right by the department.
Yep, right by this, this main road, city hall is right here, sits right here.
So ring road is closed, so we slap back this that parking lot.
Yep, well, no, that would be the one, would be closed because we would shut it, we would shut it to traffic right here. So you wouldn't be able to.
Actually talked about putting the food trucks in that lot rather than on the ring road.
Is that skate park about as, as big as the one out of Ronwood or or is it smaller?
No, 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 much smaller, yeah. It would be a much smaller. Simplistic version of something.
Skate park to the rodeo arena and not put anything there.
Um.
It's me.
Maybe the skate rink, skating rink could go to the arena, but I think the skate park would be kind of.
Oh, the skate park on the other side. No, I'm talking about skating rink.
Difficult, yeah, the rink, I agree.
Alright, the last, the last little bit here, uh, this is, this area we've decided to activate and and hopes that we could kind of partner with the library. And activate this as a learning slash kind of fun, interactive area for kids. Each of these points on this map are. Based off of a storybook. So as you walk and meander through. As you leave the playground, there's a railroad track that would kind of meander through the park here. There's also a yellow.
Is that, is that one you can ride?
No, but I wish, but we, we talked about that.
We could, we could.
We could.
Isn't there a park in, that's got a little mini railroad track that does that?
Yeah.
The state of.
There is one in St. George, yeah.
I think there was one here in Utah County.
In Utah County. Yeah, they took the top, the top, what, they looked at the top fifty children's storybooks of all time, then they took the ones they thought time. Themed in with Wild West, the park, uh, the library, so they could come out and. And they, of course, Three Little Pigs, a lot of those they chose.
About Curious George, I need Curious George.
Uh, I didn't see Curious George, but I got the Lorax.
Yes.
Amelia Bedelia.
We can add one.
Amelia Bedelia, I believe there's one there. Three Bears, Goldilocks. Well, this area would activate that. It would be themed, you could walk through, kind of a storybook land. There's different pods in here that you could do some educational things that would have some tiered seating. Um, and we'll show you some of the um images that we've created that will show some of that kind of as a, a, a better visual.
Are all these hats?
Uh, no, not, not this one.
Let's make that railroad track uh loop and actually make it writable.
Hey, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, just that last doll, the last dollar cost you see will just be bigger.
Railroad club may partner with this and.
Okay, yeah, we'll go to, here's, then the next little bit with some visuals, kind of give you a little bit more of a perspective of what, what it would look like. Rather than just a, a map. Yes, we put the carnival there just to say, hey, if you wanted it visible, this is where it would go.
Smallest carnival you got in this picture, right?
And that's, you could see the, from the promenade, you have the three sidewalks. That was intentional to flow over to the arena throughout the park. It kind of. Blends it in the water, the arena, yeah.
And then the.
Yeah, blends over to the, yeah, senior center, rec center.
Actually really enhances the better of the park, metal.
Yes, we put an emphasis on that and give it a bigger footprint, add some, some, some different landscaping and and kind of beautify that area, yep.
Yeah, in fact, that thing probably needs a facelift and it could be incorporated into a bigger kind of a seating.
Yes.
Area, your programming could get a lot, uh, you could do a lot with that.
We tried to tie that in, we tried to make that a focal point. I mean, it is, the park is named after that, that portion of the park. And so we tried to make that a, a bigger focal point. A different view that kind of shows the rodeo ground a little bit better, the swimming pool, so we're looking uh eastward here. Night picture, just so you kind of have an idea, our food truck area down here, um.
Just, just as a comment.
Yep.
Because you have food trucks by the rodeo arena and then another place that might be for food trucks.
Uh huh.
Let's make sure that there's the appropriate pads for generators or power.
Yep, of course.
Those kind of things so that. Because to me, there's nothing more irritating. I'm gonna say that to go to a food truck row, I have to listen to ten generators, uh, you know, blasting away. If, if we've got, if we've got the power.
Yep.
Yeah, hookups available.
That, that they've got the hookups that they can plug, you know.
Which this would, yeah, it just doesn't show up, cause that would be an electrical.
But you know where I'm going is let's not forget that kind of a little detail.
Yep.
Because then it, because then that enhances the experience without having generator noise and stupid stuff.
Yeah, we, we, we definitely thought about that noise pollution that you get and and we built that into a couple of the parks that we're currently under construction with as well. Is, is that something that is extremely important as we build these parks? Food trucks are a must nowadays and and we're gonna build to accommodate.
Cleaner air too.
Cleaner air too, yep.
A question I have is with the carnival that I, I mentioned this before.
Yeah.
The space that's there, is that the same amount of footprint area they've had before? Cause it just, it doesn't seem like it.
Um, it, you're. Alright, it flips over here. Um, it would be configured a little different. Um. As far as space, we'd actually probably have a little bit more space to work with.
Really?
Um, just because. We're, we're. We've got these trees in, right, currently a, a volleyball pit, a basketball court. We've got some other amenities that kind of. Shield us from expanding anymore into the park. And so this just opens it up a little bit more. There's a little bit more flat ground that we can play with.
I just wanted to make sure when you laid out how they laid it out before, is it the same amount of space?
Yeah, we'll be able to give them the same amount of space.
Alright, it just, it just seems smaller this way.
It does, but yes, we would be able to give them enough space.
Seems smaller than.
Um, kind of that view from splash pad, uh, this interactive area, the garden with all the storybooks, you see the pods that. They could use for teaching, uh, if you go to the library and a class wants to go out and and do some different things. It activates that area and and kind of makes it. You can take your kids there, you can walk and do the different storybooks and 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 interact in that area. Um, and then artificially find down here.
See, like you'll see like the plane, that, that's like the Amelia Earhart, that book, that'll have kind of a little storyboard around it. So they'll all have kind of little interactive. Whether it's a climbing feature or playground, how you wrote that story. So that part is plain and the other part is fancy.
Plain and fancy. And then the splash pad. We didn't touch a ton on the splash pad, but that was one of the top priorities was we need a splash pad on this side of the city. We need something where kids can go when it's hot and play in the splash pad. It gets put in with that storybook theme.
Is it flooded?
It's not, that's intentional. It would run almost like a little river and split off and then recirculate back into the.
Just a few inches deep kind of thing? Be more like the, the one in St. George, in their main park.
More like that one.
Yep, that's kind of what we based it off was having a little bit of a river that's, you know, only a couple inches deep.
You know, pirate ship with a slide and.
You know, those kind of splash pads.
That's great. That's really cool.
Alright. Favorite part, dollars, the cost. So we broken this down into two different um slides here. This one is based off of the priorities that were set. Um, each of these phases are color coded. Again, this is where the buffet comes in. If you don't want this or if you want that. It changes this total number here. Right now, with everything that we've shown you, we're at that number right there, twenty nine.
Doesn't include the renovation of the rodeo grounds, does it?
Yes, it does.
The rodeo grounds was ten million.
Face, oh, yeah, face four, oh, yeah.
Ten million. Yeah, we're at just under thirty giant total.
We don't act to the next six months, it will then go up. How everything's going.
You're not, you're not.
How it feels.
So. There's a couple of ways that we decided we could construct this. This is based on the priorities that were set uh by you and the council. Um, it. It gives us kind of that a la carte feel. The next one, the next slide that we have is based off of construction and. Kind of, uh, if we did this, this would be the next domino to fall. The same number, obviously, uh, it condenses some of those phases because if one thing changes, another thing has to change. And so.
Let's do phase fives, we, we can afford that one.
Yes, phase five, we'll do the, the skating area and, and, yeah, so. Those are, those are kind of the numbers, the overall look of it. There's some things obviously that we'd like to incorporate that as we've gone through this, that we'll, we'll definitely take back and. And we can refine in this plan, but uh it kind of gives you an idea of where we're at, kind of what we're looking at and and some of the dollar signs that are attached to that plan. Any questions?
So maybe this is the question, maybe it's an obvious question, maybe it's not.
Yeah.
Cost is one thing, but. Let's just say, okay, so total cost, right? Twenty nine million dollars.
Yep.
Um, twenty nine one seventy five. Let's say we just authorized a twelve million dollar park spot. Let's just say we expand that out and we make it a thirty million dollar park spot. Let's do it. Full hog, let's go in. Um, how much, how much of this can get done? How quickly, based on the disruption that it costs? The disruption to the existing park, right? Like.
Sure.
Like, are we gonna shut down the park for a year and a half and?
Yeah.
Build a new park?
Sections probably. Do it, yeah, you'd have to almost do it in phasing, right? If you do the rodeo, I mean, it's a way.
Yeah, we would have, we would definitely have to phase it. Um, we would definitely want to make it so that we're keeping people in the park.
It's done and be famous.
A lot of it makes sense, like in the blue, the blue phase. I mean, you build the courts, you want the parking all at the same time.
I think it's gonna be done pretty.
Yeah, that's what I said, a long.
Can't be right, nothing there that'd be in groups, right?
The middle parts where you'd have to kind of.
Yep, some of this area.
Fencing up.
The middle part and the ball fields and the non-ball fields, the relocation of the ball field. I guess the face, face five, it would hurt the Wild West, but you could probably fence that in.
Yeah, so there's some.
Yeah.
You can keep that open while you're building the rest.
Yeah, because really this footprint around the Wild West doesn't change a whole lot. So, yeah, that, that would be pretty minimal. It's more on this side of the park in phase five. Uh, of this example, that would be affected, yeah.
Mayor and Corbin, is there a need for another pavilion? Is the current big pavilion booked out?
Corey would know how. It, it's, it gets reserved, not as much as some of the others, but yeah, it gets reserved. We did have other pavilions built in, uh, they didn't show some of the smaller, yeah, we didn't put.
I was wondering if there's a need for a second big.
At Ronwood, at Ronwood, yes, I would say so. Uh, here, not a huge need, it's, it's a large one in the county.
Yeah.
Ronwood, yes.
This eliminates the basketball and volleyballs.
Um, it, it move, relocates them.
Okay, I didn't notice that.
Yep, basketball will move down with, to the pickleball.
Oh, okay.
Um, we did eliminate the volleyball.
Does it get used at all?
Uh, one day a year.
This one, yeah, it's an old.
The fourth of July, it gets straight, a lot of people are parked in, are camped in the park.
Does the sand one get used?
That's what.
No, that's, that's kind of what we're, yeah.
There's two, there, isn't there a cement volleyball court too?
It's just a cement path.
Cement path, that, yeah, right now it doesn't happen.
I think it was originally designed as like a roller skating plaza, just a cement pad from what I've heard, alright.
Uh, I would like to see the, uh, a staging somewhat close to amphitheater. Add into this and see where that's gonna go.
Definitely.
Cause that's something I think.
I think that's the, figure out where the stage is gonna go and modify and make it so that. Figure out where the stage is gonna go and modify and make it so that there's an amphitheater with. I would love to be able to do like a Friday night, like kind of like our first Friday thing, right, but but have a Friday night in the park and have booked a local band every. Every night in the summertime, just have.
That's what I do at Midfan, at their amphitheater.
See, see. Why send it all to Midfan?
Okay. I'd be happy to book them here.
Alright, we'll see the check next month, right?
Well, like I said, we we just did a twelve million dollar park spot. I think we get seventeen more is like, it's not, you know, it's not like an astron astronomical hundred million dollars, whatever. Over fifty years, it's a, it's it's a, it's a feasible amount, it's, you know.
And I also want to do throw in, because I think this sometimes gets overlooked, i- if we were to do it, it's great, it, there is other. I mean, it is added maintenance, and we are, even though we're not expanding, I mean, adding a promenade, adding.
Oh, yeah.
It adds a little maintenance, so there may be more hate saying labor costs, but that's what happens sometimes when you.
Get some turf and we'll save some water.
I'm not.
Multiple staff members.
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah, yeah, we'd have been on what we look at, but at least seasonal.
Yeah, it's just a question about your, the baseball park design, just because there's a couple where left field looks like the more position to play. In all of baseball, are we putting up, uh is there like a temporary fencing to kind of make that? More symmetrical around or is it?
It's just the draw, the drawing of the greens. Okay, he's on the map. He's got a point, you know, the one baseball field.
Yeah, maybe I haven't looked at it different maps, but they're.
Twenty two hundred west.
Yeah, we're looking at other options to be able to leave the, like I said, leave the fields there, but still open up like such a, we've seen some places, I've been played where. The outfield fence is just taken down, so then it's all grass, you can move fields, but then baseball, throw a portable temporary fencing. So we're looking at that as an option, so then the baseball builds could remain, but the grass is still opened up. Yep, yep, they just slide in, we did that, there's a couple places, it's great, because we use the outfield, because there's always grass behind the outfield, then you can use it for soccer.
Yeah, I was trying, because it looked like, you know, you were trying to do a multi-use and put soccer fields in the outfield, and I think it looked like that kind of.
Yep.
Made the dimensions of the baseball field.
Oh, you're really hard if you're running out, right, if you want to catch a ball, you run into the soccer. You're like the old Houston ballpark. The five soccer.
Yeah, yeah.
Your high school's got one.
Anyway.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Oh, we appreciate. So we get the funds, so we.
It really was, I enjoyed going through the packet.
Well, Brian, it's his turn.
Alright, we're gonna have at least one more on the agenda. This is discussion regarding deferred maintenance costs of city road surfacing.
This isn't fun to talk.
Brian and Krista. Thank you guys for waiting in the wings, we do have. Like a dozen seats in here, people in the other row want to.
Well, we have an hour to discuss this, so.
You do, and not a minute more. Take up the time, so it's okay.
I love what Punks says.
You paved the way, hey, this isn't my package.
Well, so do you want us?
No, I'm joking, I'm joking.
I like your puns in the title.
Thank you.
Krista did an amazing job getting this put together, um, as we chatted during the budget process. Kind of brought up the uh where we're at with our uh current pavement condition. You folks asked us to bring it back, uh. Krista's been working hard getting this put together with all the data, just to paint a picture of where we're at currently. Um. There's some big money numbers in there, don't, don't get stuck on most, um, kind of talked about the current budget. This is more so just to paint a picture of where we're at and what we need to do forward to. Prepare more funding. Up to. The PCI, so I'll turn the time over to Krista. Um, Krista manages all of our pavement management right now on top of many other things, so she's. She does a amazing job, so.
Have been managing the projects really well, making sure only the worst streets get paved, the highest priority.
But we're trying to do, yeah.
The worst street is the one out front, Chad's.
Well, we'll get there, you might get to see if that's true or not, um like Brian said, I'm Krista, I've been doing the pavement management group for about. Two years, um and today we're gonna be talking about uh planning for a smoother future for West Jordan's roads. So you guys all live in West Jordan, you know our roads, we have some really good roads. We have some bad roads and we have some very ugly roads in West Jordan. These are all real examples taken by me in the field from this year and last year of roads in West Jordan. So let's talk about how we as engineers rate and monitor the roadway conditions out there. We classify road condition and asphalt condition on a scale of zero to one hundred. And it's called the pavement condition index, also known as the PCI, so one hundred is good. Zero is failed, which is actually like returned to a gravel surface, no asphalt left on there. Um and I'm gonna walk you through what all of these conditions look like. So a perfect one hundred is a brand new paved road, there are no cracks in that.
Dealing dry.
It it is now, yes. A satisfactory. So PCI of seventy is a road that does have some minor cracking, but it's been maintained. So those cracks have been covered with crack seal and other seal coats on top to try to keep those cracks from growing wider. We start to get into the yellow condition, PCI is of seventy to fifty five, because of PCI of sixty. Um you can see some large cracks starting to open up here, very long in both directions. On that right hand shoulder, you can also start to see some ravelling, some aggregate starting to come up off that surface of the asphalt. Um this starts to become a problem, because as those cracks appear like this, water starts to intrude in them. And what happens is you eventually get to a point where the free saw cycle has made those cracks start to interconnect. So this is an example of a forty five. No, this is not.
It's in front of the mayor's house.
So PCI of forty five, you see a lot of inter blocking cracks, but also there's entire swath that doesn't have any cracks in it. We're getting worse into our very poor category, um this is a PCI in the thirties. You can start to see that all of these cracks are interlocking now, there is not a s- a single area here where those cracks don't exist. This means all that water, rain, snow is getting in, making those cracks worse, it's gonna start to develop potholes in this condition.
I like your shadow.
And then finally, we have something in the ten to fifteen range. This is really bad, the potholes are all over this road, those asphalt sections are starting to come up out of those areas.
You're right, third and second west, I know that street.
So we do have some of these, um this one, it was one we paved last year to try to get this uh PCI pushed back up. I don't have an example of a failed road, because that is actual just gra- gravel, there's no more asphalt on it. We don't actually have a road up that in West Jordan currently.
That's good.
That is good, yeah. Yay for small victories. Um, is there a way to get the setup professional audio to go away?
I don't know and I don't dare.
You know what?
Not sure what.
Maybe just X. Ah, awesome, okay, so. As you all have probably heard, we do maintain something we call the PCI database for all of our public roads in the city. And what that produces for us is this nice database graphic that shows every single public road that we maintain. On that same PCI scale, so greens are the good, yellows are the moderates, reds and oranges are the bads. Um, there are some black roads in here, those are either private roads, like UDOT roads or private residential. Or they are brand new roads that we don't have any data on yet. We are working on updating this map as well with a new PCI run. But what you can see here is we have quite a few yellows, reds and oranges, there are some greens and that's good. Um but some of our largest arterials and collector roads are reds and oranges.
Interesting.
So that's not good news, right, larger the road, more money it is to repair those roads. Do you guys want to take any closer look at this?
Sorry, I just. Brian, we don't have to worry about Thirteenth West, because it gets torn up enough that it gets repaved all the time.
Yeah, it's like repaved like twice a year.
Yeah, it gets repaved at least two, three, four times a year, at least in.
And more coming.
And more coming.
Yeah, but when they do it, it goes like this.
It just don't let Dominion do this.
Some of these streets, like, what color, this is going gray, right?
Right, so that's one that's brand new, we don't see a PCI van run on it yet, once we get our new PCI database, this year we will have. It should be a hundred those new.
There's a lot of red on there.
There's a lot of red near mine.
Yeah.
Yep, uh the further east we go, the more reds there are, because those are older neighborhoods.
I just noticed this red right here, say fifteen.
What do you think of it, you think it?
Uh it gets a little bumpy.
Okay, deserving of the red.
Hey, you know what the good news is, it's not our red.
It's not our red, you're right, we will get into just how red it is in another ten minutes.
Yeah, well, we know how red it is.
We'll send you one tomorrow, we'll be all green.
That'd be great. Okay, so let's go into pavement management and how we, the theory actually behind maintaining asphalt. So asphalt, when you start off in the green, it's very good and there's no cracks, water is unable to penetrate that asphalt surface. It means that that rating of that roadway is not declining very rapidly, right? Until you start to get some cracks develop, to develop. Then that's when it'll start to decline rapidly, so that water comes into those cracks, the free saw cycle expands those cracks. And the sun is baking that asphalt binder, so asphalt binder is essentially like rubber, so the more that sun bakes it. The drier it gets, the less flexible it gets, and the less it can hold on to all little aggregate particles in it. So when we start to have cracks develop in the eighties to seventies range, and those cracks start to widen. That's when you start to see that steep swoop come in, and then eventually there's a point in time where there's just so many cracks, it can't get any worse. That's the end of the swoop. But if we maintain it early and often while it's in the green. So that could be like applying a fog seal, a surface seal, crack seal, it can bump it right back up to that hundred. So what those surface treatments are doing is sealing any micro, keeping it from water intrusion and protecting it from the sun. I like to think of asphalt maintenance like if you own a wood deck, you install the brand new wood, you paint that deck, you wanna cover that deck with something. And if you don't cover it, the pieces start to rot, and you eventually have to replace the deck. So, working in that same analogy, if you don't replace the asphalt or maintain that asphalt. It it eventually drops to a point where you have to do a more severe treatment, but that severe treatment will bring your road back up. So let's get into what this means and how we can apply this. So, like we kind of discussed, we consider the seventy to one hundred range, where there's not a lot of cracks in that road. As routine and preventative maintenance, that's looking like your crack seals, your surface seals. Slurry seals, fog sealed, and some very small chip seals, so just very small surface coats onto that roadway. They're not really providing any structural value to the road. As you get more and more cracks, and we get into that yellow zone, uh we start looking at doing a thin mill and overlay, so a one inch mill and overlay. Or a chip seal, a full chip seal, or maybe some gap mastic, which is essentially wider crack sealed to bridge wider cracks. By the time we get to the core and very poor condition asphalt, we are starting to do a. Major resurfacing, large mill and overlay, so that's replacing two or more inches of asphalt. And then if we let it drop into that serious zone, um there's really not a lot of option left there, you essentially end up having to. Dig out most of that asphalt or all of that asphalt to get down to the base force underneath. And rebuild base force and asphalt backup, because it's just deteriorated all the way through. Um, our goal is to not let it get that far. So let's go into the cost of this, routine maintenance, so seventy and above, that PCI only costs. One cent per square foot to fifty cents per square foot, not that bad. Resurfacing starts to cost two dollars a square foot, we're already seeing those numbers jump. Major resurfacing, so mills and overlays, which we do a lot of in West Jordan, costs about three fifty a square foot. And then if we have to rebuild a road, we're talking sixteen dollars a square foot. So in terms of, and these are all real prices from twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, your Salt Lake area contractor prices, these are legitimate prices. So you'll notice the difference from just being able to do preventative maintenance to even just your next level of road that aren't that bad yet. Is four times the cost. And if you have to prepare a road into a full reconstruction, that's up to thirty two times the cost it would have cost if you could have just done. Preventative maintenance in the first place. So the theme here is, if we can stick with preventative maintenance, we can really limit our costs that we spend on asphalt maintenance. Which means we would like to stabilize our PCI average for the roadway network at around a seventy, to keep everything or most things up in that preventative maintenance. Green zone.
Question. If you're, how often do you have to do the regular maintenance? Is that every year?
I will get to that in maybe two more slides if that's.
Maybe I'm jumping ahead of you, sorry.
No, you're okay, we will get there. Um, so jumping into what our roadway looks like on a percentage basis, this coordinates with that. Uh, red through green map I showed you a couple slides back, we have about thirty percent of our roads in the green. Uh, twentyish percent in that moderate level, and the other fifty percent is in the reds and oranges. Let's not look in so hot for us, yeah. Okay, so let's compare those numbers to those costs again, thirty percent is in that one cent to fifty cent range. And if you want to lump everything else together, you have seventy percent. Below that green line, and we'd like to stabilize that. That's gonna cost us forty two times more than if we could keep things in the in the green zone. This is bad news that we have so much, that we have seventy percent below that green line. We're going to end up spending a lot more money long term on roadway maintenance. Than we would have if we had managed to keep stuff all up in green. Okay, now to your life cycle cost question, that's a great question, um. Every treatment wears off, even new asphalt needs maintenance. So, we'll start with new asphalt, untreated new asphalt. It takes about seven years from a PCI one hundred, brand new asphalt, to develop cracks until it becomes a PCI of seventy. So we've got about a seven year gap there to get some routine maintenance placed on those new roadways. So that we can try to bump them back up to the hundred.
Like, and that resets that seven years, right?
Yes, it does. So, other things that are routine and preventative maintenance on that roadway. Are things like your fog seal, your crack seal, your slurry seals, your high density mineral bond seals, which we do a lot of here. Uh and those last anywhere from two to seven years, your high density mineral bond and surface seals last year around that five to seven year range. So ideally, you take a new asphalt, you know, and in those first seven years, you apply a high density mineral bond. Or a surface seal to push it another seven years without cracks, because what those are doing is it's sealing the road. Trying to prevent any water intrusion from those cracks, if there's any micro cracking. If we let our roadway deteriorate into that yellow moderate zone, and we have to do a small, thin resurface. A thin resurface can get us five to seven years. A major resurface, so we're talking about mill and overlay of two inches plus, can get us seven to ten years. But a full depth rehab will get us ten to twenty years, because you've essentially replaced that whole asphalt surface again. But once you drop there and you have to do a full rehab reconstruction, it resets that cycle, right? It mean, it means you're back to the top with a new asphalt and you need to start maintaining it again.
You're spending thirty two times as much to get three times the life, essentially, at 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 best.
Yeah.
So in theory, based on cost. For for priorities for the city. The one thing that we have to focus on is the ones that are currently seventy or better. Because that's the most cost effective to keep maintaining at that, even though it's a smaller percentage. That one, we have to spend the mu- and then as we do some of these others. Then it puts them up into that category that we add to try to keep it cheap.
You are.
Am I, am I close?
You are correct. That is exactly what our philosophy for the last few years has been. So since I've taken it over, that is definitely our philosophy. We are trying to catch everything and bring it, we are trying to catch everything in the seventy and keep it good. And we're only taking the absolute worst cases that we're getting a lot of complaints on and trying to bring those back to the hundred. The problem with that methodology though is everything that's in the middle, everything that's in the yellow and orange. It's, it just gets worse, right? We're not doing anything to it. And we're getting complaints from any, honestly, anything yellow and down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got the complaints from residents who are dissatisfied or any.
It may true. People have type favorites for asphalt.
They haven't driven in Tulsa, so, you know, or Salt Lake City.
I can give you a, I can give you a list of bad roads if you'd like to have them drive those.
Oh, that's what I need. That's what I need.
Maybe we shouldn't hate some of those. Maybe we should like hold them off and be like, go around those ones.
We'll say, which ones we've, we've surfaced yours or this neighbor's who's much, much worse.
Theirs is always the answer. They'd like theirs. Um, so the key theme here is think of asphalt maintenance in a seven year cycle. For preservation and even for new asphalt. Everything in asphalt, you need to be getting done in a seven year cycle.
So we have to do a hundred fifty lane miles a year. Roughly.
You could think of it like that, yeah. And then other key idea, like you said, keep that PCI average seventies and up. Little reminder, this is what your PCI of seventy looks like. There's some cracking, but it is maintained. We've done some work on this road to keep it from getting worse. Let's talk about a scenario. Let's talk about where we are right now. And what would have to occur to get us back up into that average PCI of seventy. Now, keep in mind, an average PCI of that database doesn't mean every single road is a seventy. It means the average of all the roads together is a seventy. So there's a lot of good in there, a lot of seventy and up. And only some below that seventy line. So right now, our. Database average is a fifty-three in the city twenty twenty-four. We've gotta bring that up almost twenty points. To get it to a PCI of seventy-two in seven years. So, and that's the red line for you. What will it take to do that? The orange line is the budget you would need every year for the next seven years to get to that average of seventy. Now, that budget is twenty-five million dollars every single year for the next seven years. It's a lot of money.
Yes, we don't have a place.
We could bring, we could bring you veterans for more part here. We're just gonna say twenty-five, twenty-five million dollars is on what the, oh, the answer the.
But we'll have.
Come on, buddy, come on, buddy.
That's a, that's a third.
It's a lot of money.
Correct. Down in the general funds, yeah.
Yeah.
We get the new part.
Don't worry, we'll get into some other, we'll discuss some more. Let's just say we could and we did have the money to do twenty-five million a year for the next seven years. You will eventually see that we will catch up on that asphalt maintenance and we will start to only expend. One to two million dollars a year in the long term future. So to re-describe that, the blue bars are actually the unfunded maintenance of the roadways we're unable to get to every single year. So we started a hundred and twenty-four million that we're unable to get to. And as the years go by, as we've spent twenty-five million each year, we finally dropped to zero. That's good news. In this scenario, we have no more maintenance backlog. So what does that mean? In terms of how our current budget, our current budget is approximately four million dollars a year. That means our funding gap is twenty-one million dollars for the next, every single year for the next seven years. That's a lot of money. What if we do nothing? What if we stay the course and keep expanding the B and C road funds that we give the state every year with no additional funding? The red line is your PCI again, and we're gonna drop that PCI from fifty-three to thirty-three in ten years. So we're gonna end up in the thirties. And keep in mind that this is what a thirties PCI looks like. Your average road will look like this. A shot holes will be developing on all these roads. So we'll have a lot of. Maintenance and service requests to do pothole patching.
Yeah, potholes to grow.
Do you know what the median number would be if the average is thirty? If that's the mean, what? What's the median number? You know what I mean? How far is that being skewed by the really bad or the really good?
I would have to look that up in our database. Our database is currently on a remote server, so I can't get to it from here.
I, I just wonder, like how, like where that curve is, how far is it skewed toward the outliers?
So it is, this is not gonna answer your question.
If you go back to that slide that showed the percent in each category though. See the bell curve, the bell curve is not.
It's not really much of a bell. It's, it's more of a.
It's kind of flat. So then, so I think you can reasonably assume the median is somewhere around the average.
That's a good point.
The thirties, twenties, and then fifties. Yeah. Okay, so. The orange line is once again our existing yearly budget. If we were to expend four million dollars every single year for the next ten years, just like we're currently doing. And what happens to our unfunded maintenance backlog of those roadways? Well, we started the hundred and twenty-four million again, same case in the other scenario. And as the years go by, we build up all the way to two hundred fifty-five million dollars worth of unfunded maintenance backlog.
Is it true that that number is never gonna change? That's, that's money coming, coming from the state.
So that money only changes as we build additional roads and claim them as ours. The funding increase we've seen over the last ten years is what, one million? And we're only at four million and we've built heavily on our west side. So that budget is not going to increase very much.
It's challenging, it's a challenging revenue source because it's past tax. You know, so as cars get more fuel efficient, it's switched to EVs, et cetera. Those are all, those are all kind of constraints on that revenue source, so.
The state, the state does, the state's aware of this issue.
Yep, yep, they're working on it, but.
Um, one of the things we've heard from the state though, in cities. We don't expect B and C road funds to solve this entirely for you.
Right.
You gotta step up yourselves.
Right, other cities have other funding sources. So Salt Lake City, they have almost double our roadway. Miles, not quite, they're a little bit under. But they have seventeen million dollars of funding every year. So, you know, if you divide that in half. We are grossly under what they're funded.
Yeah, also higher sales tax.
Well, they subsidize theirs with, um, funding from their general fund and I think it's a tax.
It's their own subsidy.
It's, yes, it's their own. So their B and C road funds are only like, I think a million more than ours. I think they get five million. From B and C and we get four, so they fund twelve million out of other funds. And they, I think they lobby their city council every year for them. But they've reported that they're fifty million dollars underfunded every single year. That they need, well, sorry, that they need fifty million every year. So they did a whole presentation at a technical conference this last year. And if you look at ours, we're saying we need twenty-five million. We have half the roadway network that they do. It tracks that we're all, us in Salt Lake City are in similar climates of how bad our roads are.
Problem is they might issue.
They're not. We're getting more roads and they're not, so we're gonna be.
That's a great point. This does not include any growths right now. So as we grow more and more, we are adding more and more roads to our cycle that will need funding.
And the B and C road fund won't go up as we add more roads.
But not much.
To the same ratio as what we're dealing with.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So, so add in growth, you make the blue numbers bigger, but you make the orange number bigger and the red line still goes. Way the red line.
Same direction.
We're pretty much outpacing ourselves on our, on, on our, um, on the.
Yeah.
Maintenance.
But you figure growth, it's probably worse.
Yeah. Yes. And you know, this doesn't account for like if we have other crazy inflation like we've recently had and contractor prices have gone sky high again. This isn't.
This is based on today's numbers and not, yes, depends years from now.
Yes, this is based on today's numbers. The depressing one.
Yeah, just remember that today's twenty-five million is next year's twenty-eight million.
So just to look at those two scenarios for you. The pink lines are the current budget we maintain, that four million dollar budget. That pink cash line is the cumulative money we will have spent in ten years. So in ten years, we will have spent forty-four million dollars on our roadway maintenance if we spend four million each year for the next ten. And then the solid pink line that goes all the way up to the two hundred fifty-five million number is that unfunded maintenance balance. The blue line is the cumulative. Budget for the twenty-five million dollar scenario. By the end of those ten years, we will have spent a hundred and ninety million dollars on maintenance. But you'll notice that our solid unfunded maintenance obligation backlog goes to zero. So let's compare these numbers. On one hand, if you spend twenty-five million dollars a year, you've spent a hundred and ninety million dollars. That's a lot of money. And if you stick with the don't fund it anymore option. You've spent forty-four million, but you have two hundred fifty-five million left needing to be maintained. So that's a grand total of two hundred ninety-nine million dollars hanging out there in the balance. The difference between those numbers is a hundred and nine million. So if we do nothing. Versus if we fund all of our maintenance, we're looking at losing an extra hundred and nine million dollars over the next ten years. Big money.
Here's a can.
If anybody wants us on the road to take it.
Obviously has already been kicked.
It's a good thing.
I think the can has been kicked. Um, but part of it, I think, is that as those roads out on our west side, we've had explosive growth the last ten years. And that hasn't helped us. I think we were already falling behind a little bit before the explosive growth. And as those have been added into our cycle, some of those roads are fifteen years old now. We are starting to get hit with the long term. Big money maintenance costs of those roads now. So. Let's look at, uh, our next steps are funding scenario options, right? Nothing is ever all or nothing unless you want it. But there are options like what if we only increase the budget a couple million? Or what if we potentially think about desired level of service? Maybe we want to keep just our tierials and collectors a high level of drivability. But maybe we want to let some of our residential deteriorate to a much lower level of service. So this is a thirties, this is a level of service thirty PCI. You could feasibly have residential roads deteriorate to this because you're driving slowly. Now, I don't think, you know, will people like it? I think that's probably something. The residents maybe need to be asked and you guys can decide, um. But you know, you could safely drive on these roads at a poorer quality if you so chose. So there are lots of options here on funding scenarios that I'm happy to look at, um.
Is there some technological advances in the type of materials that are starting to be used? Are they still the same as they were twenty, fifty, twenty years ago?
No, we have some different technologies. The, the problem is, so one of the things I want to start looking into is a scrub seal. Um, but none of our surrounding cities have managed to get a contractor to do a scrub seal. Only UDOT has managed to down near Moab. So some of these.
They have the heat. Well, is, is the heat a big factor for them in Moab though?
Well, that is not really to the application of scrub.
Oh, I didn't know. See, I didn't know. I don't know what the scrub thing is. I just know in Arizona, it was an issue. It's different materials because of the heat. So that's what I was like going through, like Moab's got the heat issue where we don't.
No, it's slightly different. So a scrub seal is kind of like a chip seal, but instead of just spraying. The asphaltic top on, they use a broom to scrub it into the cracks. So it kind of becomes like a massive crack seal upper.
Got it.
And then they put the aggregate on top of that. So it kind of, um. Bonds those cracks together better than just a chip seal. Um, I think a lot of the problems we're facing is UDOT's a big entity. So UDOT is a heavy hitter and they can get almost any work they want done. Someone will bid on it. But we are not a big hitter in the contractor market. So for us to procure something like that. We either don't get any bids because it's a wild, crazy idea for a smaller city. Or, you know, the bidding prices are just exorbitant and we can't pay them. So there's also been some great advances in asphalt binders. That are supposed to, UDOT has really high hope they'll last much longer and handle free thaw a lot better than our current binders. But the cost is almost thirty percent more than the current binders we're using.
Percent, I mean, one to fifty, uh, one to fifty cent thing.
Yeah.
Thirty percent more is still a lot better than two dollars or three fifty or thirty.
The, right? Current one binders you're using increases the cost by about five dollars per ton. Is that correct?
So West Jordan, we do use sixty-four thirty-four and sixty-four twenty-eight. Other cities for arterials are also using sixty-four thirty-four. What makes us different? What makes us different is our sixty-four twenty-eight.
Explain what the sixty-four thirty-four.
Looks like hair.
That's fiber. So yes, you're right. That's actually almost ten dollars for a ton for us. So a general asphalt cost for asphalt, other cities are putting on residential roads is about sixty dollars a ton. We pay about seventy-five dollars a ton. For our residential roads because we're trying to put that fiber in. Um, what that fiber does is it bridges cracking. So when you have cracks that go all the way through an asphalt surface. If you cut off that top bit of asphalt and put new asphalt on, there's still cracks underneath. Those cracks will start to resurface with the, with the vehicular shaking motions and overtime, right? So West Jordan has a huge problem of this because our asphalt roadways. Um, in our older neighborhoods, so a lot of it's.
Why?
Well, it's not just that. Problem one is some of them had no base force installed underneath them and they're just on clay. That's really bad. That means the asphalt's just settle and break. Problem two is that there was a good thirty and forty years that. Um, contractors for developments were only putting down two inches of asphalt. Um, our standard is four inches these days. It's, you know, when we are out there milling and overlaying, our crews are doing a one and a half inch mill. And they are hitting base course in a lot of subdivisions immediately. So we don't even have, that's part of our maintenance problem here is on our east side. Roadways aren't even built to last. So. Going back to this, that's why we put in the fiber in our residential roadways is because we're trying to bridge those gaps. We're trying to do anything we can. To reestablish that asphalt without having to do a full depth reconstruction. Because asphalt that's only an inch and a half deep and questionable amount of base, that's what we would ideally need to do as an engineer is rebuild the entire section. We can't afford that for all of our residential.
Repaying, uh, about twenty percent more have that fiber mixed in with it. Are we getting more than twenty percent life out of that investment?
Well. Yes, because what's happening is if you don't put that fiber on. Those cracks and all those alligator cracks are just gonna reappear within five years. But that fiber get us to maybe ten to twelve. That's. Considering the game we are fighting right now is time. Trying to get as much time in between treatments on our road as possible so that we don't have to deal with them all quickly. I think there should be some cost and benefit a lot in cost time for getting ourselves there. So.
So no sandcrete, huh?
Sorry, what?
No sandcrete?
Oh, they see.
More time.
But when you bring up UDOT's doing this and that, that is kind of what the older people in the room are thinking. Well, UDOT came up with sandcrete. They did this in our freeway and it was terrible.
It was a, it was a concrete topping. And it worked really good on some test, test strips. It was made out of ash. And some other things. And it worked really good until they turned it over to a contractor and let it do commercial and then it just failed.
On I fifteen, it wasn't good.
It wasn't good. It shipped. But worked good on the, it worked on good on the ten foot test sections. It didn't work good on I fifteen.
Hey.
Well.
I also traffic public measures, I'm just saying.
Yes, they are.
They have, um, updated how they're testing asphalt luckily. So the high mod asphalt, the really expensive asphalt they've been modeling and testing. They've been testing it for the last four years on I eighties. So various large multiple mile lengths of I eighty and it's holding up really well. So they do have really high hopes for this. It's their, um, their outlook on it is so good that they are changing active contracts. Where they're actively milling and overlay roadways to just putting down high mod. So they have put a lot of faith into the backing of high mod. Um, high mod is expensive currently. I've talked to a couple suppliers in the area. Their hope is that as high mod becomes more common, that cost will go down, um. Hopefully less than a hundred dollar a ton mark. So. But once again, you know, we're talking about like other people are paying sixty dollars, we're talking a hundred dollars. That's almost two times the cost to put down high mod, right? And our residential roads. Especially the ones that are already poor underneath. It could be considered. Not efficient to do that with your money, right? Why would you put an expensive Band-Aid on something that's crumbling? You know, that expensive of a Band-Aid. Um, the fibers are the Band-Aid we've chosen to use because they're meant to try to bridge those gaps. The high mod is just supposed to last longer and not have as much wear and tear from the free thaw cycles. The high mod is just supposed to last longer and not have as much wear and tear from the free thaw cycles. So they're kind of different purposes, if that makes sense. So essentially there have been some improvements in different asphalt maintenance techniques. Um, another one is that they're using a utilite, which is a lightweight aggregate on chip seals. Instead of like a heavy dense aggregate that breaks your windshield. Um. And that one wears, so when you plow it, it becomes a smoother substance. So there are advancements. The key though is. Sometimes the cost of those advancements might not be something easy for us to use. So. Our key takeaway is. Even increasing our budget by a small amount now does have the potential to save us millions over the future. Um, uh, just a little word of note though, uh, if we do increase budget. Our current staff is at capacity with what we do manage. Um, I'm the only engineer and I am doing the surveying, the CAD, the bidding, the managing of the contracts.
Krista also does all the plans. She designs and everything, so she's saving. A lot of money for the city by doing this. So if we do increase the funding.
That's something I wanted to ask also uh, earlier, I forgot to talk about. Is the state does only allows us to do a certain amount of our own work.
That got changed.
That got changed.
It's, it's, but it's still a restriction.
Got increased. We're up to three hundred and fifty thousand, I think it is now, but we can do self-perform.
So it's based on location, um, project sites just can't be close together. So we.
Be half a mile.
Plan things to be far apart from each other. And that's why we only do one or two roads at a time.
And we do, on the arterials, we contract, we don't do arterials. We just, we, city staff does the.
We contract out all of ADA ramps, all of the sidewalk gutter, manholes, monuments.
I think this is something that we need to work with Senator Harper on and. Right? I mean, maybe we've already tried to do that. But this is a, this is a pain point for probably every city in the state.
It's not everything is taken. Whole city don't do their own self-performing. That's the problem.
All of these do actually. They just don't do milling and overlay. They need chip seal instead.
They, that's right. They can.
Yeah, actually lots.
We don't do chip seal.
It's, it's, they, they changed it. We, we brought it up. We brought it. To the hill last year.
And that's great. That's a victory.
I was gonna say, why don't we, isn't chip seal fairly cheap with the, the oil and the gravel?
Chip seal is very cheap. It's something I'd like to reincorporate this upcoming year. Uh, there was a time period where there was a moratorium on being glad to use chip seal in West Jordan. The council said no more.
Sideways on a couple things and they said no more. So years ago. We started implementing, Krista came back on to do the, we started implementing HA five. But we do HA five. Now we're gonna start working in.
We've been doing that for a while.
Yeah, but there wasn't any other, that, there wasn't any other maintenance.
Yeah.
We're not using chip seal. We're.
But anyway, we're, we're moving towards.
Without chip seal, that's like. Load your six shooter with two, two bullets and hoping it works.
Interesting thing about chip seal is you can, you can use it in two ways. You can take a really bad road that has a lot of cracks on it and you could chip seal it as what we call stopgap method. AKA, you're just trying to get squeedle as much extra life out of it as possible. Throw that can down the road and come back a foot later, right? That chip seal will break up pretty quick from those cracks underneath. But you have recovered it. You have recovered that surface for at least, you know, three to five years, right? That's not the ideal way to use chip seal. Properly applied chip seal on a road that has less cracks. Can go five to seven years, right? And once you're done with that cycle, you can put another coat on it because it's still in pretty good shape. Um.
Is that just tar and rocks?
Essentially, it's that binder. They just spray down that binder essentially. Then they put the rocks on it and then they just roll it in. There's a lot of other methods out there now, like a cape seal, where they'll do that chip seal first. They'll shave off a top layer, just a hair, and they'll put down a slurry on top. Um, the key though is every time you add a second treatment on something, that cost goes up. It's a nicer road and it might last a hair longer, but the cost keeps going up. Um, so we have talked to Paul, oh yeah, Paul's here. Um, Paul and Eagle Mountain have done a lot of. They've tried a lot of different treatments and so we have talked to Eagle Mountain and their pavement manager as well and we discussed how they. The different methods they use and how well they think they've gone. And we're hoping to use some of their. Experience with that going forward in this next year and give some of those a try. So we're lucky enough that we have some other experts we've been able to reach out to and talk to, to try to move our program into the future. Um, but yes, as Brian said, contracting out is very expensive. Um. Sign contracts, just design a plan set are like fifty to seventy thousand dollars.
How many do you do?
Like you seven. So we do save a lot of money by having in-house staff do it. Um. And we do also save a lot of money by our in-house staff doing roadway maintenance, like crack seal, doing some then milling and overlay. Uh, but there are some things we can't do, right? We can't do high density mineral bond. Um. We could potentially try chip sealing, but you know, every time you add a new maintenance technique. To a city crew, you've got to get, uh, you've got to get the material for it. You've got to get the equipment for it. You've got to train staff for it. Or you contract it out, right? So. The only other thing is our staff does a really good job. Um, I help oversee their work as well. It's they are. They do a lot of really good work because they, a lot of them are West Jordan residents, so they care to. Try to do it well. Yes, our crew cares a lot.
We should have a pave crew Olympics.
We should. We take it. Like the bricklayer.
Firefighters have their force thing they race through and he goes.
Thank you. I guarantee you.
They're really good. Yeah.
And then Mike, so there are other series to do it in ours.
Like everybody else. As you, as we're looking at budgets. It would be really nice to know, for example. If we were to. So let, let's just say we, we, we haven't done chip seals. We, if we were to bring on a chip seal crew. Uh, or, you know. How much is that gonna cost versus something else? Because, you know, chip seal seems to me, based on. Wh- what, what little experience I had at working with engineers at UDOT, chip seal seems to be reasonably inexpensive. Is that, you know, if we were to invest in the right equipment. And what can we stretch our dollars out more doing? And so, you know, for me on the council, I would like to know. What some of those costs are versus, you know, the, the, the high mineral bond and the application that we're paying somebody else. Versus chip seal, versus crack seal, versus some of those kind of things so that we actually know what the costs are. And how far can we, you know, stretch, you know, there's.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna be honest, there's no way we're gonna come up with twenty-five million dollars next year.
No.
Uh, you know, from a four mil. For a four million dollar, four million dollar budget to a twenty, we're, we're not coming up with twenty-one million. But, but how can we stretch, you know, if we, if we added. A certain amount of money to the budget, how far can we stretch that? And what will that get us either in the fair and the board?
Right.
Cause to, for, for, cause for me, it almost sounds like what we need to do is focus on the good. And then almost, and, and there's gonna be some money we're gonna spend on the serious and fail and we just have to figure out how much that is a year. And then the, if we're gonna increase the budget somehow, that's gotta be on the middle stuff to get it back the better, not. Not on the poorest, cause the poor stuff now, that thirteen percent, okay. You know, we'll deal with that thirteen percent. It's the, it seems to me that it's the. Thirty-five, is that thirty-five? It's the, it's the forty-six percent in the middle that we gotta figure out. What we're doing and how can we put money and stretch that as far as we can get it?
And see, I think we need to back up another ten thousand feet from, from that. So actually. You got the one side that shows that has the blue bars getting bigger and you have the one side that shows the blue bars getting smaller. The blue bars being the unfunded, the unfunded uh, liability portion, the unfunded mandate, whatever you wanna call it. Yeah, so there's this, there's that slide here. So this is if we fully funded for seven years. And we fixed it, right? This is, this is like, we came up with twenty-one million dollars and doubled our property tax rate. Here we go. Or whatever, or whatever we're gonna do. This is our, this is our best case. We won the lottery. This is what we do.
Right.
And then there's the, we don't do anything slide. And we got this one. Somewhere between four million dollars to twenty-five million dollars, there's middle points where these two lines kind of. Like maintain the status quo, I, to keep this line from flopping any further down and just pushing it back up to fifty.
Fifty-three percent.
Percent, right? Is something between four million and twenty-one billion doll, or twenty-five million dollars, right? What's that number? And can we look at, is, cause yeah, it's, it's broken. But it doesn't mean that it's, that we're, you know, we're not there yet. With the tankers, if we don't do anything.
Well, I don't think you and I, I don't, I don't think you and I are that far off.
No, I, I'm, but I'm not, I don't care about what's a chip seal and what's a spray seal and what's a this seal, that seal and a, and a sea lion. I don't, I don't.
We are trying to maximize.
I don't care. I, I trust these guys to do their job. I'm just trying to figure out where, as far as the funding goes, how much can we reasonably raise? To keep it at what level?
The technique matters because we.
Matters to them. It doesn't matter to me.
But it matters based on. Well, city council has prohibited them from using chip seal in the past, right? So, uh, we. You, maybe we need to lift that ban if it's not already been lifted.
We, we've already started. We're, we're starting.
So here's my question to the council is. Is it, is it fiscally responsible for us? To say you're not interested in that one hundred million dollars of savings? Right? Is that fiscally responsible for us to not pay for the required maintenance? Or is it more fiscally responsible to, to just try to even it out like you're suggesting?
Right.
Um, and, and then pay that, and maybe it's fifty, fifty million dollars extra over time, but. It's overtime instead of, oh, right now at this, you know, twenty-four million or whatever per year.
These are the, these are the numbers that I wanna look at, right? It's like, okay, let's, let's add a seven dollar a month. Fee to the, the utility bill. How much does that raise? You know, that raises eleven million a year or something like that. I'm just pulling numbers out of my head, but I think it's close. Um. And then what does that do to that, that overtime condition line and the overtime deficit? And the overtime unfunded or, um, that difference, that, that, what's the liability that we're building? For future years, right? Or is it more, when, I just remember when I was first campaigning for city council and I was campaigning alongside a couple of city council. People who've been doing this for a while. And they talked about how there was a, he asked at one point to put liners in the manhole. They'd put these liners in the manhole, the manhole would last three times long. And it would cost X number less over a long period of time, but because those covers cost money now. There wasn't the political will to spend it.
Cause they wouldn't get reelected.
Well, right. So we're spending the money, so we're kicking the can down the road. Right? At what point can we stop kicking the can down?
Well, we, you're, we can stop kicking the can down the road uh, immediately by coming up with twenty-five million. Right, twenty-five million dollars, twenty-five million dollars for seven years, coming up with almost two hundred million dollars. Um, over, over seven years, I'm gonna tell you is gonna be impossible.
Well, and I, I mean, I don't know that it is, but there is a number that's possible.
So it works best if we're brought options.
Alan just came over and whispered to me, okay, what did you wanna get out of tonight? And I told him terror. All the work is for you terrified.
Got that.
Okay, so you got it. So let's move on.
The, the, uh, the point of the meeting tonight is to just show you the size and scale of the issue. And um, to give you an appreciation that we have a phenomenal engineering staff that is working incredibly hard on. Working out the best cost benefit. Uh, approaches to addressing every segment of road at every different PCI level. We need to come back at a different meeting and talk to you about some realistic options for.
That's what I would like to see.
The resources available. We're not gonna tackle that tonight. We didn't prepare a presentation tonight. Based on alternatives of revenue generation and um, target amounts. That's a future conversation that we wanna come back in October or November.
You know, you know what I will just say is the, the terror could have been done in five seconds. That's all we needed. And, and so, and I'm just being honest. To me, the rest of it's just been a wasted time, like no options. We can't do twenty-five million. So why spend forty minutes telling me what I can't do? Let's, let's talk about why we can't do it. And that's all I'm saying. It says, it's last forty minutes is in.
I prepared options. I did.
Let's, let's. I would like to hear. I'm sure you did. That's why I can't, I can't wait.
Let's say, let's say.
The next agenda item.
Denise isn't here. We need, and um, we need to talk about. The options coupled with the financial, you know, the, going from here is a financial discussion, not an asphalt discussion.
Right.
And that's the part of, that's the second half of the discussion we need to have.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let me put this out there for that discussion so that when you come to it, yeah. The uh, what I would like to see in that discussion is a spreadsheet. We've done this before. We did with business license fees with water rates and other things. Um, for example, if road, if a road fee is gonna be part of that discussion. A spreadsheet where you enter in the road fee amount and that, the number that it produces over how much time, if a bond is the discussion, how big the bond. And we can change that number and what that produces over seven to ten or fifteen years. You know what I mean? So somewhere where we can plug in numbers and see what the difference is and see what that does to those graphs. So we can have a, an intelligent discussion.
Yeah, and Keleen's point, right? Like the council works best when we give you some. More concrete options.
Yes. Yeah, or asphalt options or chip seal options. All right. All right, um, so we'll consider that horse for now thoroughly and completely beaten unless there's anything else that wants to bring up.
That's sure.
I have one more thing. Okay. So the other component of roadway maintenance is that per federal, per federal guidelines. Whenever we redo roadways, um, so any kind of miller overlay. Um, you have to update your ADA facilities, so your ramp facilities to become ADA compliant. Um, any roadway you cross is going to be the new. And we spend about five hundred thousand dollars a year updating ADA ramps every year.
How much? Say that again.
Five hundred thousand.
That's those, those plastic yellow things.
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of rules on exactly what the slopes have to be. So pretty much any ramp you see that doesn't have that tile, it's not compliant. We've got a lot of those ramps in the city, especially on our east side. So when you consider funding needs, um, also consider that. Five hundred thousand of our four million. Is required to go to concrete or T D ramps already. So we're even further whittling that funding down as a. Those.
Yes, I like forge.
CBD J fence for those.
We have not recently.
We did once though.
That happened in twenty eighteen. That happened in twenty eighteen and they were unable to complete the project. The contractor only completed about seven out of, I think, thirty or forty ramps. Um, due to some contractor issues, so.
Well.
Yeah.
They should look at a budget.
We decided not to do it again.
Looking at budget. Kayleen's got a point here is that we, we can use CDBG funding for some of those ramps and. Maybe we can offset some costs. So look at that when you're doing budget.
Their, their ramps got completed. We, we, we hired it.
Some more.
The ones they ever got. Anyway, we'll talk.
Thank you very much.
We have applied for other funding for ramps as well. We have not. From Utah, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Well done and very thorough.
Thank you for your time. Sorry, it took so long.
Well, I'm pretty happy that you went first.
Let's hit title seven. This is the next one on the agenda, or title seventeen, excuse me. The next one on the agenda for the alcohol licensing. That's one should be pretty quick. But I think title seven might work. Let's do title seven first because it should go fast. We've already talked about parking.
I have two pages on seventeen.
Everybody thought just the leading start.
Some of them are just a little bit better in there.
For women's word, I, I told Brock that we were the cleanup hitters tonight. He says that we're the knockout punch. I don't know which one it's gonna be, but uh.
All asleep or?
Or, or something.
I can, I can preface it a little bit. Title seventeen is from the attorney's office. Um, due to some changes with the legislature, uh, and the alcohol control. Service thing. And the parking one is something that we're just, the, the staff is bringing back to you and council had discussed previously. Um, it's part one of two and next month we're talking about um. Title civil citations. That's part two. And then based on that direction, we'll bring them both back to the council for.
I might have to roll those into one. But let's see how this goes. Let's go to seventeen.
So seventeen, the general, the general concept is, is this. Um, we've got a code that. Uh, was, was done back in twenty twenty-one, took us a big step forward from our antiquated code provisions where we were previously. Um, it got us kind of modernized. It got us going in the right direction. What we need to do, I think at this point though, is not duplicate. Whatever the state has taken control of. We need to simplify our processes. We need to uh be business friendly. We need to do, uh, I think you'll see in there permits, not licenses. Um, it's, it's a permitting system as opposed to a straight licensing system. The state controls the licensing. We issue permits. Our main concern under alcohol is zone, really. That's, that's what the state is given to us. Make sure that the spot, that the establishment is going is appropriate for where you want it in your community. We've got a. Um, chart that's at the end of title seventeen, uh, that's been used. Talked to Larry Gardner about that. We've gone over it in, in detail. Um, not a ton of changes, but there are some old things in there as, as well that we kind of cleaned up, right? The state doesn't license a brew pub anymore. That, that was the thing back in the nineties that they were doing. They don't do those anymore. We've got it in our code. We can update our code simply to reflect like, hey, the state doesn't have a brew pub anymore. Or we can do what, thing I would recommend to you is simplify our code. Um, make it more user friendly for the companies to come in. Um, give us a little bit more clearer. Per view of, of what licensing authorities should be handling. Um, and, and make sure that, that it's not incumbent, not a hindrance in the process. Uh, we want to bring in, and I heard the conversations tonight, uh, if we want an entertainment district out by the, the track station. They're not gonna come if we require a twenty-page application, right? Um, they're, they're not gonna come if we request background checks on everybody who's an investor. With twenty percent interest in the company, which we do, we don't need it. And, and we don't need it. B, the state doesn't really allow us to do it. And then C, like, they're, they're already handling and running these people through the wringer at the state level. Why are we doing the same thing? And, and making it more difficult. So that's the overarching concept of title seventeen. My kind of request at this point is, is this something the council's interested in at all? Does this sound like something, do we want the long form code? I think I, I mentioned in there. We took it from like thirty pages down to like eight. Uh, uh, you know, liberal use of the belief key was, was definitely a theme. Maybe too much. I'll go back and, and relook. But I, I did want to kind of get a direction because initially when this came to me, like. Councilmember Green had said, hey, our, our, uh, our code's not in compliance with the state. We need to bring it in compliance with the state. Like just with some of the brew pub and other things. And, and yes, it does, but also I think it's an opportunity to really clean it up and modernize what we're doing. Um, to make us uh function better.
See, I, I agree with you. I, I agree with you. Three years ago when we did this, it was a big step to go that far. And uh, I mean, it was, you and I talked in the meetings. It was the first time that we actually talked to zoning and alcohol. And figured out who's zoned where. And I think we've got past that bridge. And, and I think that it's time to just delete the hell out of the ordinance and make it, you know, like you said, go from. And I, 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 I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I, I know we had some discussions three years ago and there was a little bit of. Uh, uh, you know, we'll both admit there was a little bit of this. And after, after three years, I appreciate the fact that we're ready to go to this next step. To, to make this even simpler. I think, I think that's, that's a great. Uh, testament to you and your staff to say, yeah, we're ready. Let's, let's make this simple. And so. You know, I, I talked to you about the one concern this morning, um, about it needs to refer to title sixteen and the, the license. The, the license revocation. Other than that, I was happy with this and I'm ready to go for it.
Brock agrees. Uh, right now, I kind of the draft I, I gave you says that. Essentially Brock makes the decision whether to revoke a permit. Um, broadly an oversight and by part when I was typing it, it should refer back to title sixteen. We should use some of the same licensing revocation processes that business licensing uses. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll clean that up. Um, I've, I've got that tabbed on, on my title seventeen uh working draft. Um, but yeah, we, we just want to make sure that we provide due process if we do have issues, right? I, we, we don't have a ton. Uh, West Jordan City does not have a ton of alcohol abuses in, in our city. It happens, but, but not a ton. Um, generally when it does happen, it's because maybe the process is too daunting and people don't go through. Our permitting and licensing application online. They'd rather ask forgiveness than permission sort of approach. Um, we want to bring them in. We want to get them set up. So I, I think it fits with some of that. Happy to answer any questions or concerns, comments that.
As a chair, some of mine are just grammar things or spelling issues. I could call Patrick on my own on those. But there are some that um. Yeah. So the first. Hey, go ahead.
That whole section, yeah, on the first sentence is progressive. Set it all down with the first sentence. The title, it's all alcohol licensing and zoning ordinances for the city regarding alcoholic beverage control and usage, period.
I was okay to state regulation and I agree with you.
Yeah, it's just a lot. There's a lot.
I'm happy to delete, delete, delete more.
That's all, and that is the only thing I had.
Okay, go to seventeen two four E. This is where it discusses if someone has an alcohol permit. I'm trying to get there and um they close. And my concern with this is we've got it to. Um, ten days. I believe that it can be closed for ten days, but in my mind, what we want more of is mom and pop restaurants, right? So I open up this amazing Italian restaurant and I have a liquor license. But my family is in Italy. And we're, we're a small family business. So we go to Italy for two weeks. Then you can come and take my liquor license. I just don't think ten days is enough.
We had that discussion.
It's E, not B.
So it's been, it's been in there, it's been in there for years. I think, I think what it's saying is that if you, if you close down your business. Closing up your business regardless of if you hand back your license will, will essentially equate a revocation of your permit. Within the city. We can change it to whatever number you want.
It's the closes, is the closing, so the, the question, my question, what would be, what would be the definition of closing here?
I think shutting down the business. I, I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think they're saying.
During your license.
Okay.
Eleven days later, you don't get to come back and say, I want it back.
So maybe we need to just stab it.
Does not include migration to Italy.
Yeah, and definitely include temporary pleasures, but. Yeah, yeah, permanent.
And you just exclude temporary, temporary. Yeah, we're supposed to. I know we had this discussion three years ago and I don't.
We did and we agreed.
Stayed there with ten.
Maybe you don't remember because you're drinking. So it does, yeah, it, it, we, we can definitely.
Get rid of the root for it. See, that's why I didn't bring that one up. I knew we'd already discussed it once. But I don't care if we, I don't care if we change it to thirty days.
Yeah, like there's.
I mean, that's, that's about the point.
Such a natural disaster happens, they've got to rebuild or whatever, like. And guess what? They serve alcohol. They're down for.
Not when they come back.
Technically, we could take away their zip and slay.
I think Josh, we gotta just be out of the liquor business as a city and leave it in the states.
No, we have to have some.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to. That's what this is trying to do is, but we have to give local consent. And, and so we can't, we can't just say. Josh was looking on, on the state's regulations. The state has that same ten-day regulation. And, and it is, you know, if, if you're ceasing operations, um, if you're not. What was the language? I mean, it was basically.
If you cease operations for two hundred and forty hours consecutive, uh, you have to give notice to the state. And then they can authorize you up to sixty days. I don't know what the reasoning is behind that. I don't know if they're concerned about transferring license operations, something like that. Um, but that is a state thing. So we, we will look into it a little bit more. And if there's room for us to extend that at the city level.
Otherwise, we need to make, insist on the state.
Yeah, well, yeah, make it read so it's like the state's and so that it's.
Maybe that's why it's still ten, because it's a state, state statute.
Uh, seventeen two five four. Um, instead of um. Acceptable identification. I feel like it should say state issued ID or passport is. What, who decides what's acceptable? I bring you my Copper Hills High School. ID, is that acceptable?
I don't know that it would show that you're twenty-one years of age.
The state has actually come out with a list of approved accepted IDs for the purchase of alcohol. Which would include your passport, your driver's license, state issued ID. Your, your Copper Hills one doesn't quite fall into the state.
And unfortunately, the state doesn't allow for out of country IDs. It's true. It's the, that's a big issue. In fact, a lot of people who come from out of state for the Olympics, they couldn't use their ID. To get drinks and it was a very, very frustrating thing.
That's crazy.
So maybe we can add something that, you know, just to see state code for acceptable IDs or something. Because if I come here and read this.
It, it does say that we use the definite upfronts. We, we, we use every state definition. So if they have a defined acceptable ID.
That has to be, yeah. I had a friend come from Australia. We went to, we went to go lucky thirteens and he didn't have, he left his passport at my apartment. He couldn't drink. He wasn't even allowed in to the bar.
So can they use their Australian passport as an ID?
He could use his passport, but he, every other country in the world allows your country ID or whatever and Utah doesn't.
Driver's license.
This is, this is for our licensing, you know, kind of aspect anyway. So if the twenty-one-year-old. Hawaiian named McLovin comes through, we will probably not accept that. Not if it's McLovin.
Go to seventeen ten two A.
Seventeen. Seventeen ten. It should not be a seventeen ten. There was an old seventeen ten.
Well, here, here's what my question was. Westside Planning Area Nick Stewie, is that still the term we use? Or is it now different?
We still have some properties that are zoned west side area. So that's why it's got that asterisk. And I think she's talking about the consolidated use table.
I see.
It's got the, the west side planning area.
Yep.
But I think we have to have that in there because there's some properties that are still zoned WSP.
Yeah, the Highlands.
And that one is asterisks and that one's on the, the chart. That chart is probably one of the most vital parts of title seventeen. Because it, it, it really is our local consent and where it's permitted and how we regulate.
So the state doesn't do brew pubs anymore, but people do brew pubs. So where is that? What does that fall under in our case?
If, if they're, if they're running a brew pub, some, it depends on what the operations necessarily are, but it could be a bar. Um, it could be a restaurant that they've got a, a, a restaurant beer only. It could be a restaurant full service. Uh, it could be a restaurant limited service, just depending on.
Fall under many.
It, it could, yeah.
Okay, me too.
Yeah.
And I'll call you.
Yes, why don't you just come visit, Emily? We've got snacks.
He's slowly in his office.
Yeah, HVAC.
HVAC, treats, water.
I called him this morning and he answered on second rate, so. I have never told Patrick. I thought, no, I'm just saying, give him, give him kudos. I wasn't pointing at you.
I have never told Patrick ever, but I do occasionally text Josh.
Try to be responsive and welcome me. And welcome. We do have snacks.
If you happen to notice, I'm not really a big snack.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, anyway, so that's title seventeen. Uh, again, we, we really want to make sure. Uh, that if, say, just for example, like an Outback Steakhouse were wanting to come into the city. That it would be efficient and quick and responsible for them to come through our system to get there.
Yeah, they're welcoming, so you can take these easy for them.
Absolutely. We'll make it double easy for them.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, because you, you deleted about twenty out of thirty pages, so I'm good with that. Like I said, it was a, it's a, it was a big step because it, it took a, it took a lot of work three years ago and this is the next step, so good.
I think it'll help also just so you know, like with city works and, and our online forms and application, it'll make it really, really straightforward.
So then it also cuts back on the number of applications available from the city because we're getting rid of those that the state doesn't have. We're only having the same applications that were licenses as the state.
Yep.
So with the council, with the few changes that council member Whitlock has and the suggestions mentioned tonight, do you want us to bring it back? With those changes at a council meeting or do you want us to?
I'm ready to.
Okay.
Yes.
For that, refer it out of, the correct term is refer it out of committee to the, to the body. All right. We are that kind of committee.
Uh, we've also got title seven, which is the parking. Um, we're, we're, we discussed at a previous committee of the whole moving to a civil uh model. Um, we're obviously revising title sixteen right now, which has been in the works for years at this point. Um, but it encompasses a lot of the same conversations that we're looking at here. Um, title six, I'm sorry, so title seven, the parking, uh, we did make some changes. Regarding just kind of some additions on these snow events, uh, made some additions to include. Uh, emergency vehicles as well as snow piles. I talked with fire. We had. I talked with fire. We had, uh, fire come over and talk about how there's times during the winter where they are in situations where they can't get down the road because of how people are parked. They've gotta take detours. It delays the time that they've got to respond. Causes potentially life threatening issues just because the roads get too narrow because of illegal parking. We want to kind of address that in here, that it's not just plows. It's not just cleaning up the roads so they look nice. Uh, it's, it's, you know, could be life and death type situations as well. So I think that was something that, that you had not previously even maybe considered in a previous committee of the whole, but I, I did add that in there based on the conversations with fire and some of the concerns that they had, uh, brought and talked about. Um, so the, the code is there kind of in a proposed form. With it though, I also put together a modified fee schedule. Talk about just what those are gonna look like, right? When we start issuing these civil parking tickets, how much are we gonna charge? How are we gonna handle those? And, and I will tell you, across the ci- uh, state, it, it's, it's done differently. Some will have a super high fine and give you a big discount if you pay it early. Um, some will start at low and if you drag your feet, they'll start going up and up and up. Um, St. George is more on the latter. Provo's more on the former. So I, I think it just kind of depends on how you want to structure those types of, of situations. Um, you know, how you feel about the code being revised. A lot of the changes are really just, again, bringing it in compliance with the state. Um.
Yeah, because we were, we were wailed and we were not in compliance with state.
So. I, I will say as well, it, it kind of incorporates a, a few other things that, that you've talked about in other meetings as well. So for example, roundabouts, and I know they're not universally loved, uh, but I did include in parking.
You can't, you, you, come on, come on, Jeremy.
I listen.
Guys park in roundabouts.
I listen to the meetings, but no parking in roundabouts. That's not specifically in state code. But I thought it would be important for City of West Jordan if we're gonna be using those. Um, more, I think it's, it's important to address it. So that sort of thing's been included in here. Um.
I'm, I'm good with the way it is and I don't care which way we did it.
So what, what we're doing, just, just, if everybody's okay, next month we're gonna talk about Title Sixteen, which is the companion to this. This is the definitions. The enforcement, the civil elements are Title Sixteen. So when we do bring, uh, we have a discussion next month on sixteen, there will be three items that we bring to council for approval with your all okay. And that is Title Seven amendments, Title Sixteen amendments, and, and amending the consolidated fee schedule with those fees for the civil enforcement.
As long as this is done fairly quickly, uh, the, the Title Seven stuff, we started this last November.
Well, and, and we can.
We started the Title Sixteen stuff, uh, a year and a half ago. So we've gotta get this done because we need to look at how, if we're gonna do any sort of pilots to enforce, to do parking, to enforce it this winter.
We can discuss it in October, depending on any amendments the council wants to make, minor changes. We could bring it back probably second meeting of, uh, November. We have to go through the process of, I think, Sixteen's a planning commission.
No, no, no.
Seven doesn't need to go through the planning. Sixteen doesn't need to go through the planning.
So we're probably, we probably have it done in November, depending on changes the council wants to make.
It's still too slow for me.
One of, one of the, one of the things that, that we're looking at with all of this too is enforcement. And, and I, I know the chief volunteer's been here before. We talked about, uh, the, the community service officers and things. Um, talked about maybe having, you know, some code enforcement, writing the tickets or some seasonal type of stuff. Um, but with all of this discussion, it's gonna require additional personnel with some additional time on the streets. It's also gonna require some additional time from our ALJ. We're, we're moving this into a civil realm. We're gonna need the ALJ right now. Our ALJ's here for one morning once a month. And, and that's mainly to handle property code enforcement type things, weeds, junk, et cetera. We, we need him here more or, or an ALJ here more to handle those things. So there will be some expenditure that's associated with just getting the program running. Um, but I, I think that's, that's part of this discussion as well with enforcement is who's going to.
This last November, I was to try and get that sooner, but.
Yeah.
Just do like Provo and set up a contract with the towing company.
Uh, we, we, you know, state law does allow for impounding and stuff, but it's, 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 it's not something that generally generates.
It's just wanted, it's more like a teach people to park where you're supposed to.
Yes.
Code actually, um. One, can a regular car park within thirty feet of a private driveway? Yes. Because it says trucks are not allowed to park with thirty feet of private driveway. So I was wondering if Volkswagen bug park within thirty feet of private driveway. Yes, they can.
Yeah, the, the trucks, the definition for the trucks is, is large trucks. We're not talking the.
That, that was my next question. Is a truck?
Not F one fifty.
Because your truck isn't.
Not F one fifty.
That's what I was gonna say. The truck isn't defined.
It is in state code and, and it, and then so that's up with the definitions as well. Um, to not.
Have you got a driver's or vehicles?
Uh, yeah, vehicles would be a Ford F one fifty or a car, but with.
The idea is then, the idea is to not have a semi park with thirty feet of your driveway. That's the idea. So unless otherwise provided for, definitions contained in state code, okay.
Right, right.
That's what I was gonna ask because I was concerned about, well, I can park my Volkswagen bug here, but I can't park my F one fifty here.
Have I parked my diesel?
I don't have a Volkswagen bug or an F one fifty. I'm just.
Sure.
As long as it's not thirty feet. Okay. As long as that's in there.
You don't have that much room though.
No, no. Any other thoughts on Title Seven?
Needs to be.
All right.
I brought my red pen and everything to mark my grammatical.
Seven, three, seven.
I don't have any administrative items on the agenda, so if, uh, soon as they're done whispering, we can adjourn. Do you wanna move that? Move to adjourn. Second, all the papers.
All right, okay.
Seconded that.
Uh, I, I made the motion. Zach seconded. Bob voted no. Bob voted yes.
Bob voted no.
Vote yes first.